Here.
Seven present, no one absent.
Welcome everyone to our city council meeting. Thanks so much for joining us today. Before we start, I just want to acknowledge that we are down a city clerk and down an executive assistant who normally really assists with the way these meetings are run. So our intrepid council director Jay Wilmz is taking their spot. If there are any technical or human difficulties that happen as a result of that switch today, please bear with us, but I'm sure we'll be great. We welcome everyone now to join us and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unencumbered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda items five through 30 are before you for consideration.
And I understand that we are taking item 16 for separate consideration. Is there anything else to be withdrawn from consent? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Bowie for the balance of the consent agenda. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The consent agenda is adopted as amended. Item 16 is Resolution 25-678 authorizing the Department of Public Works to accept the gift of travel expenses and related conference costs of $1,600 from WTS-MN for city staff to attend the 2025 WTS International Annual Conference and amend the budget to accommodate the gift of $1,600.
And I would like to move a version two of this item, which just increases the total maximum amount of the gift to $2,000 to allow a little extra wiggle room in case they received more of the gift. So I'd like to move version two for adoption. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The amendment is approved.
I thought we just approved it. No? Okay. Oh, okay. I would move approval of the item as well. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The resolution is adopted as amended. Item 31 is Resolution 25-720 recognizing Fair Housing Month in St. Paul.
Ms. Bowie?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Well, I just want to just briefly just recognize that April is Fair Housing Month in St. Paul. And it was really fitting for us to have it on this council meeting as we are going to vote on tenant protections and also vote on the rent stabilization ordinance. And then also, though the past couple of weeks, we didn't have a council meeting on our fifth Wednesday. So I want to just recognize the hard work of not only our staff here in the city of St. Paul, but D's who, you know, was real supportive of this fair housing, as a fair housing coordinator in support of this recognition, but also how the city of St. Paul has established a fair housing framework that includes increasing housing access, decreasing housing displacement, and affirmatively furthering our fair housing initiatives. So I would like to invite Paige from the St. Paul area Associations of Realtors to speak briefly on the importance of this resolution and the organizations that help bringing this work forward.
Welcome up, Paige. And you'll be, since you're our first public speaker, I'll use this opportunity to let everyone know that when you come to speak, you can just stand in between the two mics. You don't need to touch them at all. They'll pick you up just fine. And after you're done testifying, just sign in on either the right or left clipboard. Welcome.
Okay, will do. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Paige Cale, and I am here as a member of the St. Paul Area Association of Realtors. I am also a St. Paul resident and a co-lead of Twin Cities YMB, Yes in My Backyard. As a member of SPAR, I would like to thank you all for your continued support of fair housing with this resolution during Fair Housing Month. The purpose of the Fair, of the 1968 Fair Housing Act is to prevent discrimination in housing and to reverse neighborhood segregation. Although the law laid the groundwork for eradicating discrimination in housing, 60 years later, we still have a long way to go for it to fully be realized. In 2023, there were more than 34,000 complaints filed for housing discrimination, which continues an upward trend over the past few years. According to findings in the 2024 Fair Housing Trends Report, there was a noticeably steep increase in the number of harassment complaints, particularly harassment based on color and race, which skyrocketed by 470% and 115%, respectively. A 2021 study done at University of California, Berkeley, shows that racial residential segregation is both more widespread than is generally understood and more harmful. They found that more than 80% of major metropolitan areas in the United States were more segregated in 2019 than they were in 1990. A 2021 Minnesota housing report shows Minnesota is not immune to these nationwide trends. While Minnesota has the third highest homeownership rate in the country, it also has the fourth largest disparity between white households and black indigenous and households of color when it comes to homeownership. These data show that we have yet to achieve the goals outlined by the Fair Housing Act, which is why bringing attention to it is so crucial. We are facing extremely difficult times in housing here in St. Paul throughout the state and nationwide. I think it's fair to call it a housing crisis, and it started decades ago. Housing is getting more expensive, in part because we face a steep housing shortage. In Minnesota alone, it is estimated that we are over 1,000, 100,000 units short of what would be considered a healthy housing market. More and more, I see that affordable homes are not actually affordable. The bottom end of the homeownership market is in the $300,000-plus range, and even those often need significant work done. This reality means that so many people, especially younger generations and people of color, just don't have the access to this foundational wealth-building opportunity. In order to solve these problems, we must build more housing of all types, continue to highlight the importance of and strengthen fair housing policies, and work desperately to reduce these homeownership gaps that are unacceptable. With that, as a resident of St. Paul, as a SPAR member, and as a Realtor, I am committed to upholding these ideals and goals set forth in the Fair Housing Act. And I am very glad to see that St. Paul is committed to them as well. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much for your comments, and thank you to SPAR for your advocacy. Ms. Bowie, did you have any other comments before we take a vote?
No, my only comment, I just do appreciate this. This actually was inspired by an event that took place in Rondo where we talked about the red lighting and racial discrimination that has took place and is still taking place, particularly in our city, that we're trying to rectify and, you know, through our policies and through our advocacy, make sure that we have fair housing as the main, you know, law of the land. So thank you again for coming in and advocating, and that's all that we have today.
Great. I'll take that as a motion from Ms. Bowie. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item 32 is final adoption of ordinance 25-26, amending Chapter 43.03 of the Legislative Code pertaining to vacant buildings as it relates to the vacant building registration fee.
And this is before us for final adoption. We've had a public hearing. We've had a first reading and a staff report. I do want to note, we got some very helpful public comment, and even though this particular ordinance is not about the larger systemic changes to our vacant building ordinance that I know we all want to make and that we are working on, the comment that we received, I think, will be really helpful in informing some of those changes. So I want to thank those who wrote in and informed them, but this is simply a fee change. So I would move approval. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item 33 is first reading, reading of ordinance 25-32, considering the application of Matt Kennivan to rezone the item, or rezone property at 959 Payne Avenue from B2 Community Business to T2 Traditional Neighborhood and amending Chapter 60 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map.
And as this is a first reading, I believe we have a staff report. Come on up.
Council President, council members, thank you. My name is Stefan Hankerson. I'm a city planner with PED, and I'm presenting the case for the rezoning from B2 to T2 for 959 Payne Avenue. 959 Payne Avenue is located in the Payne-Falen neighborhood on the southwest corner of the Payne Ave and Case Ave intersection. It is primarily surrounded by B2 zoning on the Payne Ave corridor with office used to the north, bar, restaurant, and retail uses to the east, retail and office to the south, and there is a vacant residential lot zoned H2 to the west. The property at 959 Payne Ave has been used as a general retail use specializing in shoe sales since 1948, and it has been zoned B2 since 1975. The property was sold to the applicant in September of 2024, and the applicant has requested a rezoning as the property owner from B2 Community Business to T2 Traditional Neighborhood to establish a small cannabis product manufacturing facility. There are four findings that must be met for a rezoning, and Planning Commission found that these findings were met. T2 is a good fit for this property, given that the uses allowed in T2 are complementary to the mix of uses in the B2-zoned areas along Payne Ave. Additionally, there is existing transit service along Payne Ave, and the uses allowed in T2 can help facilitate a vibrant business district along Payne Ave.
There's a question from Ms. Johnson. Oh, perfect timing.
Yes.
Wonderful. Can you, just kind of going back to how the rest of Payne Avenue is zoned, can you share, is this the only T2, would this be the only T2-zoned property in that block radius?
Council President, Council Member Johnson, this would not be the only property zoned.
Where is the nearest, like, just going back to this slide that you had the zones about, where is the nearest?
Yeah, it's about two blocks south. I don't have it up on the map here. This is just the intersection, but two blocks south, there is T2 zoning. On the intersection of Payne and Wells, there is T2 zoning. But additionally, I would say that the uses in T2 are complementary to the uses in B2, and that's how we're evaluating it.
Okay, could you, there's a follow-up. Could you say a little bit more about like how, how they're complementary? I know it's not on the screen, and I don't think it's relatively close to where the next T2-zoned area is, so could you just share a little bit more, like, when you were reviewing this application and this request, what kind of, what do you mean by complementary and what exactly? So when I see like, you know, just some of the things that's currently zoned for, the bar, the restaurants, retail uses, office and retail, and then I hear cannabis, so I'm just, a cannabis growing site, processing site? Could you just clarify again the, like, complementary how?
Absolutely, yeah, Council President, Council Member. The uses allowed in T2 include many of the commercial uses allowed in B2, as well as housing, small or low-density housing, some low-density mixed-use residential and commercial that would fit with a commercial corridor such as Payne Ave.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Hankerson, and thanks, Ms. Johnson. And of course, the advantage to having the staff report at first reading is that it gives us time to follow up and get additional information if we need to. So I appreciate the presentation. Any other questions for Mr. Hankerson? Doesn't look like it. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
The item is laid over to May 14th for second reading, public hearing. Item...
So, are we going to bring this up? Okay, so we, this brings us to the public hearing section of our agenda. Just as a reminder to those who are testifying, and again, really, really glad to see the chamber so packed. We joke about our millions of viewers at home, but it looks like we have millions of viewers and listeners here today, so that's even better. I do want to let some of the millions on that side know that there are seats on that side as well, and you can hear just as well. So just wanted to encourage people, if you're feeling crowded, there's a lot of other seats over here. We are actually going to do a little bit of reconfiguring of the agenda, just because we have, we have a couple of individuals who are here for individual items, and to be respectful of their time, we are going to be moving them up. So we are going to have Ms. Mormon come up to tell us which items those are, and then we'll move on to the rest of our public hearings.
Item number 50, RLHTA 25-159, ratifying the appealed special tax assessment for property at 671 Cook Avenue East.
Good afternoon, council members. The property at 671 Cook Avenue East received an order to clean up the property on December 23rd of '24. It was to be done by December 30th, and it was rechecked on December 31st. The work was not completed, and the crew was dispatched and did the cleanup on January 3rd, so about 10 days later. This is the original order going out to the owner. You can see in the photograph, we've got the snow-covered pickup and the mattress there. And follow-up, this is what the crew found, when, or that's what the recheck was, and here's what the crew found. So throughout, we're seeing the mattress. The pickup truck went away, but the mattress remains. The owner did indicate that he never received notice of this violation, and therefore he didn't correct it. The notice was sent to the owner's address of record, and there was no returned mail on this, so I don't know what to say on that. I can say that the city has had a history of successfully providing notice to this owner. On three different occasions in this last year, there were cleanups performed by the city, and in another three occasions, there were cleanups performed by the owner before the city crew had to be there. So there's been correspondence in the past, and Mr. Nguyen indicates it's his birthday today.
Wow. Thank you so much, Ms. Mormon. Happy birthday, Mr. Nguyen. Before you go away, any questions for Ms. Mormon? Not seeing any? All right, welcome up. You will have, and everyone will have, two minutes to testify, with one exception, which I'll tell you later. So two minutes, they go by fast. My job is to make sure everyone keeps to two minutes, so I will let you know when you're at time. There's also a clock right in front of you. Again, just stand between the two microphones. You don't need to touch them. Start by telling us your name and where you're coming from, and afterwards, just sign in on one of the two sign-in sheets. And Vice President Kemp?
Just a point of clarification, because he's the impacted party doesn't need five minutes. That's only for people. It's only for...
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Your Honor. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Patrick Nguyen, the owner of the address 671 Cook Avenue East, St. Paul. I just bought the empty land several months ago, and looked like the city sent several letters, asked me to clean up the yard, looked like someone dumped a trash over there and cut the grass, but I didn't receive any letters, and the city sent me three citations. I already tried to pay two of them, and the third one, each one is about $450, $500. I paid two of them already, and I'm here to appeal and request if you can wait for me the third assessment. I am working part-time recently, and I have two little kids, so this amount is big for me. Please help me. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Make sure to sign in. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from Ms. Yang to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Nguyen, you can take a seat, and we're going to talk about your, your case. So you can sit down. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Yang?
Thanks, Council President. Well, first I want to say happy birthday. Thank you so much for joining us in the council chambers here and testifying. I have questions for you, Marsha. I'm wondering, what's the remaining balance? The, the property owner mentioned that they've paid some amount already.
Could you repeat that question?
What's the remaining balance that needs to be paid?
Without looking at the old assessments, just looking at the one in front of the council today, the amount is $475. I could check through the other ones if you want. That's what we have today.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful to know. I do want to say thank you to the property owner. Thank you for taking it, you know, taking the issue into your own hands for the past abatements that have been ordered. It sounds like you have taken action before in the past, and I'm sorry that you didn't receive the, the notices for this item here. What is really difficult in situations like this is that when it is the, the city that sends, sends workers out to do the cleanup, then there has to be, like, there is an assessment for it, and if it isn't paid for by the property owner, then the fees just get shifted over to other residents across the city. So it is a really tough decision to make. What I would be willing to do is to spread out the, the balance that needs to be paid over five years, though, because it does sound like you, with what you mentioned, it's a large amount that you're having to pay in one lump sum. So I hope that that's an accommodation that would be helpful to you, and I would like to move with that motion.
Thanks, Ms. Yang. So the motion is to, to affirm the recommendation of Legislative Hearing Officer, but allow the payments to be made over five years.
Yeah.
Great. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The resolution is adopted as amended.
Ms. Mormon, is there another case in front of us?
Yes, item number 60.
Item number 60, ratifying Legislative Hearing, item 25-171, ratifying the appealed special tax assessment for property at 2054 Laurel Avenue.
Ms. Mormon?
Council President, this is another summary abatement order. I am pulling up the record on it as we speak. So this is a photograph of the red couch in question. It said, "Please remove and properly dispose of the red couch and pallets from the rear of the property. Thank you." And so that is where we begin. The staff was out there to do a recheck, and the red couch was gone, but these pallets did remain. Finally, the, excuse me, sorry about that. The contractor showed up at the property and did find that those pallets remained and removed them. There's the after photo. The charge for the assessment is... $440 total, and the appellant is indicating that he disputes how the pallets were handled and whether or not they continue to be a violation. Would like to speak to that, so...
Any questions for Ms. Mormon? Doesn't look like it. All right, this is a public hearing. Welcome up. You have two minutes. Just a reminder to start by telling us your name and where you're coming from.
Thank you so much. My name is Thomas Fisher. I'm a owner and resident of 2054 Laurel Avenue. And I respectfully ask that the council delete or sharply reduce the $440 assessment because, one, the contractor removed property that was never cited and was sitting on the neighboring parcel, and, two, the city acted long after I had complied with the written order and without giving the fresh notice required by law. The item was not cited, and it was on the wrong parcel. She didn't mention it in the photos. I don't know if we can pull those back up, but, are you able to do that? But there was a gray couch in those photos that was on the neighboring lawn, on the neighboring parcel, that was taken away by this contractor, was not even included in the original assessment. That was a red couch, completely different. And the, let's see, and also, the SAO gave me five days to remove the couch and red pallets. I met that deadline for the couch and had arranged removal for the pallets within five days. Basically, we had those all removed from our property. There was, there were two stacks of pallets, so...
Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, this is what I wanted. So as you can see up there on the screen, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you, but there's that gray couch in the background there, not the red couch. And in the next photo, you can see that they have taken away the gray couch that was here. That's on our neighbor, that, this garage is our neighbor's and not on our property. And then these blue pallets here in the middle were part of the much larger stack of pallets that were used for a event we had in our backyard, and those, that big stack of pallets was taken away. We had scheduled to be taken away, and this smaller stack was, remained in our yard and used for our parking pad for cars to back up. The original, and after we had taken all those pallets away, we had never received any notice from the city that those pallets in the rear of our parking pad were a nuisance or needed to be removed. We had removed a much larger stack of pallets that...
You are at time, so I'm going to need you to wrap up.
Okay. We move, I'll just skip to my closing then. I support the city's cleanup program here. However, the records show I acted quickly, stayed in communication, and was billed for removing an item that was never cited and wasn't even on my lawn. Equity in the code both require that the assessment be struck, or at least pared down to the minimal cost, of the last pallet stack, which a normal pallet removal is about $40 versus the $440.
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else here to testify on this item? Don't forget to sign in. Doesn't look like it. I'm going to take a motion for Mr. Pervatsky to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The public hearing is closed.
And you can take a seat, Mr. Pervatsky. For your...
Thank you, President Naker. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to lay this over so I have a chance to chat with Legislative Hearing Officer, Marsha Mormon. Until next week.
Motion is for a one-week layover of the item. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The resolution is laid over to May 14th, 2025.
Ms. Mormon, are there any other items on Legislative Hearing Agenda here to speak right now?
Not that I'm aware of, but I will be here in case somebody shows up.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we are going back to our regularly scheduled program, kind of. We are going to do 34, 35, and 36 in a slightly different order. We are first going to do item 36, then 35, then 34, just to make sure people are paying attention. So we'll first do item 36.
Item 36 is APC 25-4, considering the appeal of Brian Pierce to a decision of the Planning Commission approving a re-establishment of non-conforming use for Abel, Pliego, Burgos at 237 Richmond Street.
And I believe we have a staff report. Welcome back, Mr. Hankerson.
Council President, council members, hello again. I'm just going to pause my presentation. So this case is 237 Richmond Street. It's an appeal of a Planning Commission approval of a non-conforming use permit for a service business with workshop. 237 Richmond Street is located in the West Seventh neighborhood on the northwest corner of St. Clair Ave and Richmond Street intersection. The surrounding zoning is primarily residential to the north, south, and west, with H2 zoning, residential to the east with T1 zoning. There's also an auto service station to the southeast in an area zoned B3. There's extensive history at this site, so I just want to go into a bit of background. The previous use was a longtime auto repair business that became a legal non-conforming use due to a citywide rezoning in 1970. use due to a citywide rezoning in 1975, so it was allowed prior to 1975 in that zoning district. It was rezoned, and the previous use is not allowed under that rezoning, but since it was established prior to the rezoning, it was allowed. Some might say grandfathered in. I know we're not really using that term now, but. And the parcel was rezoned to its current T1 zoning in 2011 as part of the District Nine Residential Zoning Study. The auto repair license associated with the property expired in 2023, and the expiration of the license led to the loss of the legal nonconforming use status at the property. The current owner purchased the property in 2023 and initially operated without proper city permission. They seized their operations after a complaint was forwarded to Department of Safety and Inspections and applied to become illegal nonconforming use with the reestablishment of nonconforming use permits. In our zoning code, a reestablishment of a nonconforming use permit is allowed if applied for, once the nonconforming use has been vacant for more than a year. Planning Commission ultimately approved with conditions on April 4. There were additional conditions added, and that's a quick summary, but happy to take any questions. I know there may be questions on this one.
Great, thanks so much. Any questions? Doesn't look like it. All right, we might need you back, so don't go far. All right, this is a public hearing, and this is the situation I mentioned earlier where we actually do have more time given for certain parties. So we'll first have the appellant, those, the individual who submitted the appeal, come up, and you'll have five minutes. Then the applicant, the owner of the space in this case, would have five minutes. And then we'll open it up for general public testimony, where everyone will be limited to two minutes. So we'll start with five minutes for the appellant. And remember to start with your name, where you're coming from, and welcome up.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you, members, for taking our appeals and taking the time out of your day to try and assist the situation and help us. Background, my name is Brian Pierce. I live at 447 St. Clair. I've been there since 1984. We've extensively remodeled our house. It's got a brand-new basement underneath it. We put a two-story addition on it. It's been remodeled from top to bottom. My wife and I and some family members have done all of it, okay? We've invested heavily in our home. We've had the, when we moved into the house, there was a residential home on the 237 Richmond Lot. The house burned, got turned into a parking lot. The parking lot was, there was some resistance to that, and we were told we couldn't do anything about it. The meantime, the lot, the, what was supposed to be done in the lot was never followed through by the City Planning Commission to make sure that what was, what was given to us was there. So all the, the parking blocks, there's things that are missing in the parking lot today that were never, they ever put there. Anyway, this nonconform, this, when it, when the construction company moved in now, they've been making, we tried to see if we could live with it, okay? That's why I didn't call right away. But the throwing materials around and loading and unloading trailers, they're trying, the Planning Commission is trying to compare that to starting up a car and driving it and putting it into a garage, and it's calling it an equal. It's not. They're loading and they're unloading. In their documents, they're letting them use the parking lot for storage and loading and unloading, and that was not allowed with an auto repair shop. They got one mechanic that was there, the person that owned the house was working in the garage, and now we've got 10 people coming and going. The impact is far greater than what it is. The hours they're proposing to use is seven to seven, seven days a week. They already were coming there on holidays and everything else, so I don't have a home. You've taken away my sanctity, my home, if you allow this to go there. We can't, we, our home, we can't, we can't enjoy our home, which we've invested heavily in. It's not the proper use for this, and they've made a mistake on classifying it as a similar use to an auto shop. It's a construction company, which is clearly not allowed in a T1. It's not allowed to have outside storage. I think they didn't put enough weight on the fact that what it actually is, then they tried to massage it in. And if you were listening to the Planning Commission, they were talking about, why are we trying to do this again? Why are we trying to fit this in? Why are we putting lipstick on this? So they clearly were struggling in their department as to what's the right thing to do. It's not the appropriate thing for the neighborhood. It's not a good use. It's not a good match, and it's really going to harm us. It's going to do damage to us with our property value and our quality of life. I'm not saying it can't be developed into something, but a construction company is not it.
And, ma'am, are you trying to put something on the voice-activated projector over there?
Pardon me?
Were you trying to project something?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just need the projector on. Thank you. You can put it back where you were putting it before, and it'll come up on the screen.
There's a couple of things.
It's just trying to show, the nature of their business is they, they flip homes. So they bring back debris. We're talking about beds. You're talking about couches. You're talking about furniture, appliances. That's the kind of stuff they bring back. So there's bags of garbage left around the property. We can't control whether they bring back asbestos, whether they bring back lead, whether there's bugs and rodents. We can't control any of that with what, the way they use the property. There's no, there's no way to safeguard that we're not exposed to that. That's really the problem, is they're bringing stuff. It's not just concrete. They dump concrete on the site. I realize they're trying to say if we do these things, does it mitigate it? It's not going to work. They started at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, and I tried the second year to talk to them, and they went right back to in 2024, starting in the morning early again. There's one guy, he's trying to be quiet, but you can't be quiet at that time in the morning, and the neighborhood is quiet. You can actually have your windows open and enjoy it. In the city, it's quiet. So when they start moving stuff around, you, it's disturbing. So it's just not a good fix. He says in his letter, he wants to be a good neighbor. His grass is about a foot tall right now. Is it my responsibility to call the city and turn him in? He cuts it about twice a year since he's been there. They don't, they don't take care of the snow. They don't maintain the property in a good manner. He says he wants to be a good neighbor, but he's not doing anything to show that. So I have no faith that he's going to act and follow through these conditions. We're just going to prolong this problem and make it worse, and I've already got about $10,000 out in attorney's fees and legal fees to try and stop this. I'm the one that went to an attorney to make the city aware that they were using the property improperly, and I did it through an attorney because I asked that they would follow the rules and apply them correctly. When the city attorney approached my attorney, said, "What do you want out of this?" I said, "I want them to follow the rules and follow this through." So that's when they dismissed the case. They said I would do that, and that's not where we're at. They're trying to get it to fit in there, and it's not appropriate. I need help from the council to get, to not allow this and move it on and make it a more appropriate use for the lot. We need your help. I don't know what else to say, but I could.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
All right, make sure to sign in, and then we will hear from the, the property owner next. And, sir, because you're using an interpreter, we will make sure that you have equal time. We'll stop the clock during the interpretation. Come on up, welcome. You can stand between the two microphones and just tell us your name and where you're coming from to start.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Abel Pliego Burgos.
Good afternoon. My name is Abel Pliego Burgos.
Gracias por el apoyo que podemos tener acá.
And I appreciate in anticipation all the support that we're going to have or we can have from you.
First of all, when I bought the property, pretty much I bought it just for using it for my construction business, but I didn't know that the roots. Disculpa, me. No, yo no sabía las reglas.
I didn't know the rules.
Que había en eso. Mi hijo.
My son.
Estaba encargado de continuar para los permisos y todo.
Was really in charge of continuing with the permits.
Pero por desgracia, mi hijo murió hace diez, diez meses.
But unfortunately, my son passed away 10 months ago.
Y yo no pude moverme mucho para arreglar todo.
And I wasn't able to move as he was trying to.
Pero yo no sabía que yo no podría tener materiales o poner concreto o, o, o sea.
But I didn't have a clue that I couldn't have material or move anything in those days when I purchased the property.
Y fue ese motivo que yo tenía, este, pues materiales ahí en la yarda.
And that's the motive, that I had some materials in my yard.
Pero si ustedes me dicen las reglas que yo tengo que seguir, yo las voy a seguir.
But you just need to tell me, what are the rules that I need to follow? And I, I will make sure that I will follow them.
Yo no tengo ningún problema para nada. Soy de, soy de esa misma comunidad.
I don't have any problems. I'm from the same community.
Lo único que les pido que, pues, si pudieran ayudarme a, a arreglar ese problema.
The only thing that I ask is if you could help me, please, to solve this problem.
Voy a ser el mejor, el mejor, este, pues, el mejor amigo de la, de la sociedad ahí.
I'm going to be a, a good friend of the neighborhood, for sure.
Soy persona, tengo 20 años haciendo esta clase de negocio, y nunca he tenido esta clase de problemas hasta hoy.
I've been doing this type of business for over 20 years, and I've never had any issues until today.
So, no tengo mucho que decir, lo que les quiero decir es que soy un buen ciudadano.
I don't have anything else to say. I just want to say that I'm a good citizen.
So, si podemos trabajar y hablar con el señor ahí, me gustaría, este, comunicarme con él.
But I really want to establish communication with him and anybody.
No voy a poner nada de materiales en la yarda, simplemente quiero.
If you ask me, I'm not going to put any materials in my backyard.
Voy a tener una o dos trailers, pero no voy a tener cosas que le moleste a la, a la comunidad.
I may have a couple of trucks or trailers, but I will not have anything that interferes or creates any disturbance with the community.
Yo no tengo, yo no tengo trocas grandes, son trocas pequeñas.
I don't have big trucks, small trucks only.
Solamente las trailers que ocupo para trabajar.
It's only the trailers that I'm using for my work.
Si alguno de los, de la comunidad necesita mi servicio, estoy para servirles.
And if anybody in the community needs my services, I will help them.
So, es lo único que tengo que decir.
That's the only thing that I want to say.
Y perdón por lo que pasó en el pasado, que no, no sabía las reglas, pero ahora ya las sé.
I'm really sorry about what happened in the past because I didn't know the rules, but I know them now.
So, es lo único que tengo que decir. Muchas gracias.
That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
But I just wanted to say.
Okay, and now we'll move on to the regular rest of our public hearing. And again, for all future testimony, there will be a limit of two minutes per person that does go by really quickly, and I will be cutting you off at two minutes, which is the least favorite part of my job. So come on up. It'd be great if folks don't mind lining up if you're planning to speak on this issue, just so we can get a sense of how many folks we're expecting. And our first speaker can come on up. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council members. Thank you for taking the time to address this issue. My name is Meg Doer. I live at 223 Colborne, so I am an immediate neighbor to this site in question. I also serve as the Board President of the West Seventh Fort Road Federation. I want to start off by saying that we support small independent businesses, and we empathize with the situation, but it is not the community or the city or the city council's responsibility to do the necessary due diligence for property owners in determining if their, if their planned use is permitted at the site. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that. The nuisance issues have been discussed, and maybe they'll be fixed, maybe not, but for the Federation, our big concern is actually with the zoning and the failed process between the Planning Commission and planning staff. This is a neighborhood node. It's one block from the St. Clair West Seventh Neighborhood Node, which is supposed to be supporting pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented development that provides community amenities. The previous use was a small car repair shop that did provide some neighborhood services. Locals got their cars fixed. This is purely a construction workshop that has no public-facing amenities whatsoever. So there's a number of other inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan, but one thing that we were concerned about is the zoning committee initially determined five to zero to reject this extension of the nonconventional use permit. The planning staff actually came back against those recommendations and proposed a staff report recommending approval. And ultimately, it was passed with very little discussion about the community concerns and alliance with the comprehensive plan. We also have questions about whether City Ordinance 62.109 applies, which is additional condition that requires a notarized petition of 100 of residents within 100 feet of the property in support. That never happened. It wasn't mentioned, and it wasn't discussed.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your testimony. Don't forget to sign in. Come on up.
Hey there, my name is Jermaine Ivar. I live at 466 St. Clair Avenue, and I'm just here in support of the neighborhood. I've been there for the past 15 years in the neighborhood. I frequently went to the automotive mechanic who was there about half a block away. I guess I, I would rather see something there for the neighborhood, for, for people to interact with there. I mean, my, my plan, when I saw it up for sale, was opening like this kind of industrial-themed coffee shop in there, but that never panned out. I guess I just want to say that the property is surrounded by houses. It's, it's in the neighborhood, surrounded by houses, so it's just, I think unfortunately the owner chose the wrong location for his type of business, and it really shouldn't be there. So I'm in support of denying the renewal of the permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to sign in and welcome up.
Good afternoon, members of the council. While there are many other issues, my name, sorry, my name is Anna Swanberg. I live at 217 Richmond Street, two houses down from the property we are discussing today. There are many other issues that have been mentioned previously that I would like to address, but I'm going to keep my comments to the City Ordinance 62.109E, which discusses the requirements for the reestablishment of a nonconforming use permit. Of the five conditions, none are being met. The requirement number one is the structure, structures and land combination cannot reasonably or economically be used for a conforming purpose. I believe that with a little creativity, the garage and lot could be repurposed into something appropriate for the neighborhood, such as a coffee shop or artist's studio. Requirement two, the proposed use is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the previous legal nonconforming use. Brian talked extensively about this, so I don't feel like I need to elaborate on that any farther. Requirement number three, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the existing character of the development in the immediate neighborhood or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Work trucks consistently park across the sidewalk, posing a safety risk to pedestrians, particularly the many children that live in the immediate vicinity. I live two houses down, and I have three elementary-age children, and there are many others that live on the same block. So with the increased traffic, there is a risk to pedestrians in the neighborhood. Requirement four, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This point, I think, is largely covered by what other people have said, that there could be more appropriate uses, that semi-industrial use of a contractor's lot is not appropriate for the comprehensive plan. And finally, the requirement five, with the notarized petition of at least two-thirds of the owners describe of the parcel, like, in favor of the reestablishment of the permit that Meg mentioned, has not been anywhere in the discussion.
And I do need to stop.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And don't forget to sign in. Just a reminder to everyone that since two minutes does go by so quickly, any emails or other correspondence that we received on these items is in our record and is in front of us for review. So don't feel like if you weren't able to say everything in two minutes, that's the only way to communicate your views to the council. Welcome up.
Hi, Darren Tobold. I live at 212 Colborne Street, which is on the block that, that is in question here. It's a really weird block. I don't know if anyone has seen it. It's like, there's no alley, so I am, we're all within 100 feet, anyone who lives on that block. So I did send an email. I have sent correspondence, and I'm just here saying, hey, look at my email. But I just want to take the higher-level view of, of what the zoning, you know, just like, asking you to like, live with the plans that we've made, like, as a community. I was on the district council in 2011, and yes, I was a user of Magix Auto as well. It was really nice to be able to push my car to the auto repair shop, but that's not what this type of, the, the new type would be. It's not going to be a neighborhood-serving business. If you look down, and like I said, you know, my, my original comments were how the staff report, how laughable the staff report was and how this would meet the standards, and it doesn't. We, you know, like, this is going to be within the commercial node of, of St. Clair and West Seventh, which is going to be a transit stop. It's going to be a different kind of transit stop than people have thought, but it's going to be a transit stop. It's going to be a stationary design. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, what's going to happen within this stationary area. So saying that this is commercial area, it's not commercial. I also, the, calling it a service station, the gas station is convenience store, there's no auto service there. So, you know, this is a very, this is, you know, restaurants, grocery stores, all these things. I mean, this, this block could use, you know, more density. It could use that coffee shop that, that you wanted to order. I mean, there's, you know, so many great opportunities. I wanna point out that staff did at one point say, well, it's a hard reuse of a property and it can't be something like a coffee shop or a restaurant. I said, well, I wanna meet you at Badweather and have that conversation. I mean, we can do good creative reuse and we should and we deserve it and please, please there, be there for us.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to sign in. Welcome up.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Quintanilla Solvet de Ibarra. I live at 466 St. Clair with Jermaine, who testified earlier. I was also, our cards weren't to Magic's before. I'm primarily here to support my neighbor who is in a huge amount of distress and I've only recently learned about how much it's disrupting their quality of life. But I wanna say, you know, first and foremost, that I am, you know, a supporter of immigrant and small business owners. And after hearing the testimony of señor Piego, I, my heart goes out to him and I'm sorry for the loss of his son and understand more the circumstances that brought us to where we are today. I wanna give instead some context around commercial businesses in our neighborhood. So my husband and I had a small community art gallery, something that would be appropriate for a mixed studio and, you know, commercial space like this one. And we had a space on Smith Avenue and closed that down during the pandemic. So I've been calling around many places in West Seventh Neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods, looking for something similar. And there's a systemic issue of places not being shared with the community in appropriate timeline so that community, local community members can make a decision about how to activate those spaces. And then, most of the time renters, the landlords don't even call me back. So they would rather that those commercial spaces go empty without anybody activating those spaces. And so my, my larger concern is about the way in which this place was purchased without us even knowing about it. Meanwhile, we have all these other empty places that are more industrial just one block away.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Don't forget to sign in. Welcome up.
Hi, hello council. My name is Fernando Vega. I also live in the neighborhood. So first of all, it's not a workshop. We're not working in there. We bring our trailers. We're not working there all day. Like we grab our trailer early in the morning, head to work, get our job done. And yes, with the, the breeze that does come from the job that we had did, they close the places where we can go dump at like 5:00 PM. So there's nowhere else we can go dump. So we have to dump that tomorrow in the morning. Like that's why that all the trash and debris stuff came to be because we have to, sometimes we get out of work later and like, but yeah, we're not working in there. The trucks being in the way is because it's also, the sidewalk is on the driveway as well. So it kinda makes sense that, you know, like the truck has to go through the sidewalk, over the sidewalk, cuz it's, but yeah. Yeah, that's, that's really all I had to say too. Like, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks so much for your testimony. Don't forget to sign in. Welcome up. And I just encourage at this point, anyone else who wants to testify on item 36, please stand up to get in line. This is final call. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Andrew Pierce, 675 Oakdale Avenue. I'm Brian's son. I used to live at 447 St. Clair Avenue when growing up. Before it was an auto shop, I mean, it was, it was busy traffic caused a lot of accidents on the, on the corner. I grew up there, so I've seen a lot of accidents on that corner. I can't imagine that backing trailers, you know, over the sidewalk and, and adding that extra traffic there is gonna help anything out as far as that goes. I had a few things here. I should've wrote down. Let's take it out here. Sorry. Not my, not my thing to speak publicly. So, you know, I know Abel said he would follow rules that were given to him. I know at a closing table when you buy a property, that it's explained what the uses of the company or what previous use licenses there are. I know he was, one of the neighbors, he said that, you know, he was running an automotive shop out of there. So I think he had a little bit better idea of the rules that were at hand and that he may be breaking some. I also know that during the cease and desist for operating the business there, he continued to operate through that. So I don't think, you know, like giving him a new set of rules is gonna, you know, rectify the situation. Also, I als, I seen on the, on the non-conforming use, 84 hours a week. And if you can imagine being next door to construction, 84 hours a week, that's, you know, most of the waking hours of the day for somebody, seven days a week, 12 hours a day. That's a lot to ask out of a neighborhood, that it's a residential neighborhood. My two kids, they do daycare with my mom. They're down there. When construction debris is coming in, you don't know what it is. It's coming out of old houses. It's all 50s houses in Highland Park. There's a lot of asbestos. There's a lot of lead paint in those houses.
And you are at time, so I do need to have you wrap up.
Well, I think that'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to sign in. All right, with that, looks like we are through our public hearing on that item. I will move to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The public hearing is closed.
Well, I wanna thank everyone so much for coming out to testify today and also for all of your engagement over the course of this process over the last few months. Mr. Burgos, I wanna say I'm very sorry for your loss and I'm really grateful to you for, for your openness about that and for doing business in the city. Our job as the council in these situations is very narrow. It's to see if there were any errors in the findings of the previous body to, to send a recommendation to us. In this case, it was the planning commission that sent us a recommendation for approval. And so our job is to see if we can, if we think they were in error in any way. So if our discussion seems very narrow and very legal and very court-like, that's because it has to be, we're really acting as a court in these situations. So I have, the council member whose word this is in, I, I've watched the planning commission meeting and the entire discussion dedicated to this item. I listened to the entire zoning committee discussion of this item and I've read the record and the testimony in front of us. And I believe that the planning commission erred in findings one, two, and four, and I'll explain to my colleagues why. Finding one is that the structure or structure and land in combination cannot reasonably or economically be used for a conforming purpose. This was mentioned during the testimony today, but in the staff report and in the zoning committee discussion and in the planning committee discussion, the staff report only listed daycare or residence as possible uses. But they ignored at least three other uses that are allowed by right in T1 districts, including a trade school, general office or studio, and service business, which includes some of the retail that was just mentioned. Those specific alternate uses were never discussed at the planning commission and the entire question of whether other uses were reasonable was barely discussed, except for a point that was made that would require that remediation would be needed if it were converted to a residence. But that's not the only permitted use. Findings two and finding four are also not met. Finding two reads, the proposed use is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the previous legal non-conforming use. And finding four is about compatibility with the comprehensive plan. Staff's findings, which then oriented all the conversation at planning commission, focused only on one part of this, which is whether or not the use is more or less intensive. And we heard some comments about this just now. I think reasonable people can differ as to whether or not a concrete truck, storage and warehouse is more or less intensive than an auto repair shop. The trucks are heavier and there's a different kind of contents, but, you know, there might be more cars and the amount of daily traffic might be smaller. But the discussion completely overlooked the question of appropriateness to the district from a different angle, not intensity, but whether or not the business is oriented toward the needs of the neighborhood. And as we heard here tonight, this business is in a neighborhood node. And the comprehensive plan repeatedly, over and over again, in all of its policies about neighborhood nodes, emphasizes that the kind of businesses that are appropriate for those nodes are those that somehow serve the immediate neighborhood. It's not that we're trying to encourage all businesses or all economic development. It's specifically businesses that quote, "develop the micro economies of neighborhood nodes" or invest in neighborhood nodes to quote, "achieve development that enables people to meet their daily needs within walking distance" or promote quote, "neighborhood-serving commercial businesses." So it's clear over and over in the comp plan that the neighborhood node has, is supposed to be for a specific kind of business. The planning commission barely discussed this question. The only time the question of whether or not this business was neighborhood-oriented came up was when one commissioner mentioned that the business was neighborhood-oriented because he could walk in and ask about getting concrete work done at his home. Well, by that reasoning, any use would be neighborhood-serving as long as there was a person behind a counter and you could walk in and ask them for services, right? A scrap metal yard would be neighborhood-serving if you could walk in and ask someone behind the counter to help you with your scrap metal. But that doesn't make any sense. And even if it did, there isn't going to be anybody behind the counter to talk to at this business because there isn't a counter. The applicant has very clearly stated in their application, "We do not anticipate any customer visits to the shop. The property will be used strictly for storage purposes only." It could not be more clear that this is not a neighborhood-serving business. The applicant is clear as such. And so it is not consistent with a neighborhood node or with a comprehensive plan. Rather than focusing on all of these relevancies and the appropriateness of the use, the discussion at the planning commission only revolved around whether the conditions could be imposed to make the use more acceptable to the neighborhood. Conditions like planting trees or repairing the fence or not blocking neighbors' driveways, which is already illegal. But all of those conditions, which took up again almost all the time at both zoning committee and planning commission, those are completely beside the point. Those conditions are about how to make the use less of a nuisance to the neighborhood, rather than whether or not the use is appropriate in the first place. And that to me is the most glaring error in the discussion and the findings of planning commission. So for those reasons, I believe the planning commission erred in its decision and I would move to grant the appeal. I would open it up to my colleagues for additional comments and thoughts. Doesn't look like there are any. Okay, we will take a roll call vote. So the motion again is to approve the appeal, which would deny the re-establishment of the non-conforming use permit.
Pravatsky?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Buie?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Jost?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Council President Naker?
Aye.
There being five in favor, two opposed, those being opposed Pravatsky and Johnson, the motion of intent to grant the appeal is approved. The motion of intent is to grant the appeal. Item 35 is final adoption of ordinance 25-31, creating chapter 193 of the legislative code pertaining to tenant protections. The public hearing was continued from April 9th.
All right, and this is before us for a continuation of a public hearing we held on April 9th and there are no amendments being proposed, so the ordinance remains in the same form in which you saw it on April 9th. So we do welcome your testimony, but especially would welcome testimony that is new or not repetitive or redundant from testimony that maybe was given on April 9th. And again, the ordinance has not changed in its form since then. Again, you'll have two minutes. Start with your name, where you're coming from, and don't forget to sign in. And if you're here to testify on tenant protections, welcome up.
Hi, my name's Scott Hesselgrave. I was here the last time, but I have some different points to make now. I was born in Bethesda Hospital, a couple blocks from the Capitol, and I never thought I'd see things like this happening in the city I've always lived in. I'm on the east side now and take, manage a little five-plex. And stripping those boundaries that protect the safety of the tenants is what this, the worst part of this ordinance does. Safety boundaries, those are, those are good, healthy relationship boundaries that we all have. We discern who we want relationships with. And then also affecting how we can sever those relationships on an equal manner. These just cause provisions to put conditions on, oh, this, this, this just isn't working out. How about we give notice and end it? It's just as simple as that. You call it tenant protections, but you're not protecting the tenants. The only ones, you're serving felons. Imagine if you're in prison for a felony and somebody is threatening you, cuz that happens all the time there. And your wife or girlfriend and your children renting are forced to live next to more felons because of an ordinance like this. Those people there that are, that are threatening you can also put their other people next door to your family to abuse and, and your, you know, covertly or overtly. And then you, the management can't even hardly get them out of there. That's, that's the effect of what's going on here. You're putting the most predatory felons in our housing. Whether you, you know, rent or own or own rental, it affects, you know, it's, and it's not without empathy for people that have committed crimes. There is healing, but our ci, our state doesn't help with that at all. But there is always in America the opportunity to diligently save up only 20% of the capital required to buy your own. And every, even most egregious felons can do that and should, and everybody should do that. We all have a duty in America to own our piece of the pie and keep it from these corporations, which your other ordinance is discriminatively favoring over we the people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Way to keep it to two minutes. That was very impressive. Don't forget to sign in. Anyone else here to testify on tenant protections, welcome up.
Good afternoon. My name's Tony Cambada. I reside in Cottage Grove. I own several rental properties in St. Paul. I've been a real estate broker since 2012 and I've been a landlord since about 2015. Section 504B of state statute covers most of what tenant protections is trying to do. In, in a perfect world, we wouldn't need a tenant protections ordinance because landlords would already be complying with 504B. But we all know that that's not the reality. I've also been a city councilman for the city I live in. And I, when I took my oath, it was to promote the health and welfare of my community through enacting local ordinance. And I believe that's what you guys are trying to do here. You're trying to promote the public, the public safety, health and welfare of your community. I support tenant protections in, in what its goal is. But sometimes there's the law of unintended consequences. And as a council member, I sometimes had to make decisions that were unpopular, but were the right choice to progress the, the best outcome for my city. And tenant protections, sounds good on paper. It, it should do more than it does. I think, you know, 504B.181 says that landlords are supposed to inform their tenants that the landlord-tenant handbook exists. I bet if you surveyed 100 landlords, 70 of them wouldn't even know what that book is. So I think informing tenants is a huge tenant to making tenant protections more effective, right? People need to know what their rights are.
You are at time.
Oh, I am out of time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service on the city council as well. Welcome up.
Good afternoon. City council members, again, I'm a repeat testifier, but there are things that are different that I noticed on this new amendment. I came in late, so excuse me. I just wanna point out, one of the things here on page two, it says, "Exemption to the limitation on rent increases shall not apply to a project until such time."
Mr. Troy, I'm so sorry, but that is actually the other ordinance. We're considering rent stabilization and right now we're on tenant protections.
Oh, okay.
So we'll welcome you back in just a minute.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I got a.
I thought you, I thought you found a change we didn't even know about. All right. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Well, we'll have you, we'll have you back on that item cuz we, we have to just stick to this one for now.
Oh, okay.
We'll bring you back up. Okay, thank you. Come on up.
Hi, Tom Bagnoli. I live at 272 Woodlawn Avenue. Grew up my whole life in Ramsey County, lived in St. Paul my whole life, only just recently left for college. I had actually structured my speech to include the two, so this is the first time for me. Just kinda figuring how, how things are done. I'll just say this. I have always been interested in real estate, got my first job out of college. I'm an apartment broker. I know the implication of that in reference to what's being discussed. Haven't made a dime. In real estate, you don't make a dime until you sell a deal, so it's not really implicated as a bias here. I just feel like this would not go over well with a lot of the owners that I've talked to. As my job, it's literally my job to talk to owners, stuff that affects them, stuff that could lead to affecting them. So I call probably 100 owners every day and every owner that I talk to, that I talk to about this and talk to how they're dealing with rising inflation. to about this, and talk to how they're dealing with rising inflation, and construction costs, and insurance, and building expenses for a building that was built in 1920, not 2004. It's all somewhat manageable. It's hell, but it's manageable. What's not manageable is when you talk to every owner, they all, literally every single one of them, sometimes countless down the line, even if it's a duplex, or if it's 80 units, they all have stories. And those stories, stories vary with difficulty, complexity. I talked to an owner yesterday that owned a building on Grand Avenue, just a small five-plex cut-up. She had, in 1994, she had gang members living in the house, couldn't get them out for six months.
I didn't mean to stop you there. I'm so sorry. Thank you very much for your testimony. Welcome, come on up.
Hey, folks, John Slade. I live on the east side, and I am a small landlord. I, I'm heartily in favor of all of these tenant protections. I want to thank my councilmember Johnson for pushing them and doing what they've got. These are reasonable protections, and they're reasonable protections for an industry that has a history of abuses, redlining, restrictive covenants. I mean, if you look at the history of what has happened in real estate, there's racism up and down. I want to very much thank Councilmember Bowie for the work on the Fair Housing Month piece, and I also wanted to say that as the organizer of the St. Paul Micah chapter, one tenant protection that we have been pushing, that we don't see yet, is fair housing testing. And so I am using this opportunity to say, hey, let's get fair housing testing, where we get people of two different races with the same financial background to go out into the industry and see what apartments they get shown, to see what housing they get, houses they get shown. And if there are differences, it's a violation of fair housing law, and it gets prosecuted by the city. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Don't forget to sign in. All right, last call for any testimony on tenant protections number 35. Not seeing any, so I'm gonna take a motion from Ms. Johnson to, oh, one more. All right, if anyone else is here to testify for tenant protections, please line up now. Otherwise, this is it. Welcome, sir.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I also want to thank my, my single-parent mother, who raised my brother and I, and mostly rental, living situations here in Philadelphia. And moving here, we actually found ourselves homeless at one point. I want to urge city council to continue to, to not continue to commoditize housing. Listen to what voters across St. Paul have advocated for, and that's stronger renters' rights.
Great.
Yeah. Looking back 20 years...
Sir, I'm so sorry, but I think you also might be testifying on rent stabilization, not tenant protections. Is that right?
This is a blanket statement. Looking back 20 years, in '07, we had the housing crash, and here we're looking at the same, some of the same issues, but with, we're fighting, struggling for blue sky at this point, four walls and blue sky. As renters, individuals, and families who call this community home, let's stand together and strengthen, strength lives in unity, advocating for our needs and well-being, not prioritizing private interest over lives and homes. Thank you.
Would you mind just saying your name and where you're coming from today?
Yanni Humis, District 2, Ward 6.
Thank you so much. Don't forget to sign in. All right, I'm taking a motion from Ms. Johnson to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The public hearing is closed.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you to all of the community members who took the time to either write in, email our office, attend one of our many community discussions with councilmembers at the table. I, for the past year and a half, I've had the honor of being able to be a lead councilmember on tenant protections. This is officially, you know, the first time our office is bringing forth a monumental ordinance that I think is really important and honestly, truly stems back beyond my tenure and is pretty much bringing back an old promise and revitalizing that, reclaiming that, and ensuring that community members understood that we didn't forget about it when it was voted to rescind prior to my term. I want to just share, share with you all that I am thankful to the council and to the administration and the city, and our city attorney's office, and SCARDA, and Megan Hafner, and City Attorney Lindsay Olson as well, for working with us, spending many, many hours. I'm sure they're probably like, yeah, hours, nights, weekends, but I just want to share with you all that, like, it took a lot of work to bring this forth, and I would also be remiss if I didn't discuss and just highlight former councilmember Mitra Jalali and Dua Yang Hoffman, who also participated along with Councilmember Prawatzky as well, and some of the initial tenant protections conversations. But I think the main things, you know, from my comments, I'll be brief and just say, one of the things I think that is important about this ordinance is that it is reasonable, it's something that has passed amongst this council before, and in many cases, there was work to be done on an ordinance, just like with any other place. It's important that we don't make promises years, years prior, and then rescind on them, and then never bring them back to community. And I know that I've heard and had intentional conversations with housing advocates, with, with developers, with landlords, with property managers, with renters, with homeowners, and folks citywide, because this is a citywide conversation. You know, I probably represent the east side of St. Paul, and I'm in Ward 7. We have one of the highest eviction rates, we have the highest disconnection rates, we literally, Pyz code, 55106 is on the top of the list on all of those inequities. And when you think about evictions, it's not just as simple as saying, yes, in our state, you're supposed to give a 14-day notice. But we're, what this is doing is allowing us to catch up with many other municipalities and provide a 30-day written notice to give individuals a knowledge and notice that, hey, if you're not able to pay your rent, you need to explore other avenues, you need to explore rental assistance, you need to basically blow the horn now, because you're getting that 30-day notice. It's not preventing, you know, what it is not doing is basically preventing that ability for any other reason besides that, and I think we were clarifying that as well. There are several different screening protections that are in, that are in place here that I think are really important, but honestly, I think the, the notice of sale policy that is brought forward took into account a lot of the community feedback, a lot of the direct pushback from prior years as well, to really make it something that could be enforceable, but also something that could sustain challenge. In addition to that, I would say the security deposits piece that's embedded in the policies that we see here, it's really important. Depending on whether or not you're gonna rent an apartment building, or a townhome, or a, you know, or a home, a house, you do see security deposit lines climb in many ways. We've heard stories, especially on the east side, of individuals who've had to pay two, three times their rent at times, just to, just to move in to, and get the keys to their place. I am proud that hopefully after this vote, and to all my colleagues who have all committed and co-sponsored, I just want to say thank you for being able to do that. Thank you for reviewing the work. Thank you for spending the time with me and asking your questions. We read every single public comment that was given. We read the full record, whether you were in my ward or not, because it's a citywide conversation. We've continued to try to be transparent with our leadership and have those conversations, but I'm really excited today, in part, for being able to bring this back, because it's in a multi-year conversation with multiple different folks at, at the food, at the front line of everything, at the food-feeding space of it. But I know that it takes a lot of work to get to this point, and so I know that it's just one item on the many things that we have to do today, but I'm extremely excited to support this ordinance. I was happy to be able to stand in solidarity with my sister last year, outside of my, outside of a Ward 7 property, talking to individuals and renters about why their tenant protections needed to be protected, and I just want to share with my Ward 7 constituents and my east side constituents, this is a promise that I shared with you when you, when you voted me in, and it's a promise I intend to keep today with my vote of support, and I'd move to approve.
Thanks so much, Ms. Johnson. Other comments? Ms. Jost?
Thank you, Council President Naker. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. You know, St. Paul really needs tenant protections, and they're very long overdue. The last time that this was discussed in our city was five years ago, when I was sitting on a district council in McAllister-Grohlend. I truly believe that tenant protections are the right policy tool for the job that we're trying to solve. Tenants are a majority of the residents in this city, and I think it's uncontroversial to say that they deserve a similar kind of stability as those who own their homes. I'm really proud of the work that Councilmember Johnson has done on this, and I'm grateful for it, and also for our former council president, Mitra Jalali, and all of their aides and all of their staff, and to the city attorney's office. Try not to forget anyone here, but thank you so much for their work on this, and to all my colleagues, and I'm extremely proud to be supporting this today.
All right, thanks so, sorry, I was so moved, I didn't even think to say the next thing. Thanks so much, Ms. Jost. I'm just nodding along. Other comments? Ms. Yang?
Thanks, Council President. I also want to chime in and say thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for your work in leading our tenant protections draft ordinance here. I'm very supportive of it, and just wanted to say overall that, I mean, I was a supporter from the get-go. It was one of the biggest votes that I took coming into office here, and I believe that what we are passing here, it's, it's deeply aligned with our mission and values around restorative justice, giving folks a second chance so that they do have a home, which to me, a home is a basic need and a human right, setting limits on security deposits and giving folks really a fair chance to be able to attain housing without having to, having to pay so much upfront. And to me, that's really important, because as a councilmember, where in my ward, the average median income of households is only a li, a little over $50,000, it is, this is going to make a huge difference in the lives of people who've already been counted out from the beginning. So it is a very important balance that we are creating here in the council to really give people in our communities who are hurting most, especially economically, a fair chance to be able to get the housing that they deserve. And my hope is that, that our council here and future councils will only continue to get input from community members about how we can strengthen this ordinance here. And what I'm really proud about is that, I mean, I'm thinking back to the community event that we had a few weeks back, your office, and my office, and also the council vice presidents, and I mentioned that what is here in the ordinance is truly crafted by community members, because these are their concerns that we've been hearing, that we have worked together to, to find a resolve for, and so I'm really proud of how centered this is in community, especially, again, the voices of folks who've been so deeply marginalized in, in our city here.
Thanks so much, Ms. Yang. Ms. Kim?
Thank you. I'm gonna just glob on. So just time and time again, our constituents have shared their strong desire for more protections for renters, and I'm very happy that we're building on the work that was done at the state legislature, and that we're making it easier for renters to live here in St. Paul. I wish I'd actually brought you flowers, now that I'm thinking about it. But you deserve all the flowers. When you first proposed this, and you had language, there was very little, but I will say, I had concerns with, and much more impressed about how robust and inclusive, and how directly, how it directly addressed the issues that constituents have for the tiny slice of the east side that I have and the north end. I also feel it's important to give flowers to Melanie Johnson, the LA and the Ward 7 office. Thank you so much for the work. I was witness to a very brief moment of you two working together, pulling this, and together, you're quite the formidable team. So congratulations to the both of you. And lastly, of course, our former council president, but it is very uniquely poetic to be at the table here with Councilmember Prawatzky, who, some of the best years in City Hall, you and I were running around, fighting all the fights together, but, don't quote me on this, but I think my last day in City Hall, where we named it Hua-Jung-Kim Day, was the day that we had to repeal the first iteration of tenant protection. So it feels sort of like a poetic justice, but also very happy to have you here, Matt, and be able to take this vote with you, and I'm planning on voting in the affirmative.
Thanks, Ms. Kim. Mr. Prawatzky?
Thank you, Council President Naker. There's so many folks in the current departments who have helped make this happen, Councilmember Johnson, you carrying it over the finish line. I'll take my token responsibility to name the city staff who did so much to bring this forward the first time around. Muter Munier-Carcho Ramos, Kirsten Birch, Caleb Shookman, and Kate Rodriguez were our lead staff internally, put so much blood, sweat, and tears into shaping this ordinance. So, so, so many folks in the community who spent years fighting for this before that, folks like Carolyn Chopansky, Trem Huang, Margaret Kaplan, folks at HomeLine, many, many, many others that are in this room that I'm forgetting or not able to name directly, who have spent years fighting for the hundreds of thousands of renters who call St. Paul home. Obviously, to my former boss, Mitra Jalali, who led this effort the first time around, to Dua Yang Hernandez, who ensured that this lived on, to come back to us at the table, to Jenny Nelson and Kristen Kojel, who have, you know, are in my very short stint version of the Ward 4 office now, and are so fantastic in helping these, these projects move forward. As Councilmember Joe spoke to, and so many folks have said, all renters in our community deserve safe and stable housing. This ordinance moves us closer to that real, reality, and it really is that simple. Very proud to vote yes today.
Thanks so much. Ms. Bowie?
Thank you, Council President, and also thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for being like the lead sponsor on this. I really appreciate voting and speaking to ordinances that we have unanimous sponsorship and support of. I also want to just, you know, echo the appreciation for all of the staff, all of the leaders, all of the advocates that went into creating an idea into now ordinance and a, an illegal statute, particularly in our, in our city charter. So also want to uplift the work from many of the advocates within my ward, the Frogtown Neighborhood Association, our district councils, that have fought for housing justice and have always been on the front lines, ensuring that the voices of renters are heard. My heart is 100% committed to ensure that this work is done. However, I would say my analytical mind breeds caution around the continuous work that's gonna take place, that is ahead, particularly around the enforcement, and I've always had said that and made that really clear around making sure we're keeping our promises, and we're doing that through a really strong admin citations, really strong enforcement, also really strong staff capacity to actually implement this work. In, in the ordinance itself, it does, says it's gonna take a year for this to go into effect. I do think, I'm voting for this primarily because it doesn't hurt. It doesn't hurt the housing advocacy, it doesn't hurt the housing availability, and ultimately, we need, we need a landlord licensing program, we need clear enforcement mechanisms, we need more staffing, and importantly, we need a strong tax base, tax base to build the government programs to actually, to protect tenants. So we are not in the same position we're in with the passing of the rent stabilization, but without, you know, the supports to enforce it. And lastly, and I want to speak to this, because I heard it come up in some of the testimonies, I want to also highlight, there's really been some bold moves that's been happening on the state level, and also in our neighboring city, City of Minneapolis, to ban the box, issuing the ban the box campaign, to where we will eliminate housing discrimination against people who have criminal backgrounds. And I've had heard, you know, through some of the testimonies, some really discouraging comments, particularly around how we see and view people who are financially challenged and who have had criminal backgrounds, you know, having access to housing. And as someone who has championed, restored the vote at the state level, and also someone who has been a voice for making sure our communities are inclusive of people who have served their time and have paid their dues of their past mistakes, it would be counterintuitive for me to not acknowledge that there are still barriers that's existing with our policies. And I'm voting today in favor of this, because I believe and trust that we still are committed to that work, and advocating not only at state level, but to continue, continue to make sure that we are free of barriers to housing. And I also just believe, I don't believe perfection being the enemy of the good. So this step forward is a good direction. I also want to give flowers again to Councilmember Johnson, to leading this conversation as we are taking forth really big changes when it comes to our housing development here in St. Paul.
Great. Well, thanks to all of my colleagues, there's literally nothing to add, except to say another huge thank you to you, Chair Johnson, for your consistent and visionary leadership to get this done. And I can say, as someone who was here when we had to withdraw the tenant protections ordinance the first time, there are very few things as painful as having to withdraw an ordinance that so many people worked so hard on, and I'm really glad that we mentioned former Council President Mitra Jalali in this space, because it was her leadership that got us here in the first place. Having to withdraw that is, is so hard and was so confusing to our residents, and I'm so glad to be able to tell them, finally, tenant protections are back, and you're covered. So with that, we will take a vote. I think the motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven in favor and none opposed. The ordinance is, the ordinance is adopted.
Item 34 is final adoption of ordinance 25-29, amending Chapter 193A.08 of the Legislative Code pertaining to rent stabilization. The public hearing was continued from April 9.
So the way we're going to do this one is there are two amendments that are going to be offered for consideration prior to the public hearing. I'm going to call on the two main sponsors of those amendments to just preview what those amendments will be so that if you're testifying, you know what could be, what will be put in front of us for consideration after the public hearing. So you can make your comments on the ordinance as it is, the ordinance with the amendments, however you'd like. And then we will vote on the amendments and then we, after the public hearing, and then we will vote on the ordinance as a whole. If the amendments are adopted, this ordinance will need to be laid over for another week before a final vote can be taken. So it's possible we'll vote tonight. It's possible we'll vote next week. So with that, this is a public hearing on item 34, rent stabilization. Come on up. Oh, I'm so sorry. Before we do that, I literally just thought we weren't going to do that. Ms. Yang?
Thank you. And we're doing comments, basically, right? Once we're introducing the amendment.
That's what you're planning to do.
Okay, great. All right. Well, I want to open up my statements here by first saying that I am so grateful to voters here in our city and so many nonprofits, organizations, unions, just community groups and community members who have been, who were so involved when the rent stabilization ballot initiative was happening back in 2021. I was very supportive of this initiative. And I bring this up because I believe that if it weren't for that ballot initiative in our city right now, we probably wouldn't have rent stabilization. Not because it isn't something that we, that there is, there isn't support for, but really, you know, during my work on the council here, it's always been pretty split in terms of where the stances have been from council members, also out in the community as well. And I believe that folks recognize that. That's why they realize this was something that needed to be brought to the voters. And so I'm very grateful that in our democracy here, we even have a ballot initiative option for folks to really, so that the will of the people is put on the ballot and they can make decisions on what they would like to see happen in their city, whether it's a policy or anything just related to work here that is happening in our city. I have always been really supportive of rent stabilization. And I do want to first say that if it were up to me, my preference would be we wouldn't make any amendments right now to our current ordinance. For several years now, I've been hearing not only, you know, from council members here, I have also been raising this myself. I've been hearing it from community members about the need to have data on how our, how effective our ordinance has been, what are the impacts of it. There's always, there's been this rhetoric around rent stabilization has been delaying construction here in our city. And my question has always been, what is the justification? Where is the justification for that? And to this day, I have not seen the data get delivered here in front of the council at all to make, to justify any of the rhetoric we've been hearing that saying that rent stabilization isn't working for our city. And so to be perfectly honest, it was, you know, when there were conversations around amending our rent stabilization ordinance and also this proposal around a permanent exemption for new construction built after '24 was introduced, I was very opposed to it. And I do want to share briefly what the amendment here is that I'm bringing forward. Because while I, while my stance is that I wouldn't, I would prefer that we not make any amendments to our ordinance, I understand that there is an interest from some council members to move forward in amending our current ordinance. And I think that it's really important for us to really go back to the things that are important to the council here, things that we've been bringing up at the table, things that are our values and what I believe should be really centered in conversations like this and even in amendments. Because one of the things that I see is really problematic about the proposed amendment here, the original proposed amendment being brought forward by Councilmember Joest is that, most importantly, this truly does not reflect work that has been informed by community members or pretty much an extensive community process. And so what I'm bringing forward here, some of you are probably really familiar with it because I'm not bringing forward anything that is new at all. I'm bringing forward something that has been discussed, has been considered, and has even been supported by elected officials, some elected officials here in the city, especially those who have pretty much been pretty resistant to the idea of rent stabilization. And the amendment here would be, it's under the language for exceptions to residential rental property that is newly constructed or had a change in occupancy classification. The change is that the limitation on rent increases shall not apply to newly constructed residential rental properties that were issued their first building certificate of occupancy less than 30 years from the date of notice of a rent increase. So we are changing the 20, the current 20-year exemption for those properties to 30 years. Also, the limitation on rent increases shall not apply to formerly non-residential properties or portions of non-residential properties that were issued a new or renewed building certificate of occupancy because of a change in occupancy classification to residential rental properties. Such properties or portions of properties that have changed occupancy classification from non-residential to residential rental property are exempted from the limitation on rent increases for 30 years from the date of the first building certificate of occupancy issued after the change. So to just reiterate that, we would be striking out the 20-year exemption in our ordinance to 30 years. I put a lot of thought into, you know, why I would even be putting this forward. And to me, what, I really made my decision based on the conversations that were had in the rent stabilization stakeholders group that was convened by the mayor's office a few years ago. And I want to say thank you to so many people who dedicated their time and energy to serving on this. That was a really long and extensive community process that occurred, and I really value your time. I think it's really important that what we put forward in terms of changes to policy is actually discussed in the community. And I've said that, I said that earlier. I also want to reference a few things that were even written in the report. There was a report, basically, that summed up meetings that happened during the stakeholders group and also shared proposals that were considered by the group, polling results as well. In rent stabilization programs, rent stabilization programs provide exemptions for new construction in one of two ways. The first is to exempt all housing constructed after a specific date. That date is usually set at or near the initiation of the rent stabilization program. And this type of exemption that I just read from the report here is what is, is what is the current original amendment being brought forward by Councilmember Joest. And it even lists here that a concern with exemptions of this type is that they result in an ever shrinking stock of rent regulated units, both in relative and absolute terms, as new units are constructed that are exempt and older units are demolished or otherwise removed. And how I understand that is, you know, to me, my biggest concern is with the permanent exemption in place, basically what I, what we are going to be seeing more of is working class folks, frontline workers, living in buildings that are old, while new shiny construction buildings are here perpetuating gentrification in our communities and having rents that are extremely unaffordable. Also, it's going to create a two-tiered system amongst property owners, landlords, too. Like, to me, it is extremely inequitable that our small landlords are going to have to be complying with a rule under rent stabilization that is extreme, that is more restrictive than newer construct, newly constructed units, which are pretty much built by corporate corporations and big developers. And so there is a huge equity issue here, which has already been named by many people who have been sent up, have been sending in testimonies to us. And another type of exemption that I want to read here, because it says there's two. The second approach is to exempt new construction in a rolling fashion where the exemption lasts for a period of years and the units are brought into the regulated stock. The terms of rolling exemptions vary greatly from five years at the short end to 30 years at the longest. And in a polling that happened within the stakeholders group, members favored a rolling exemption over a fixed exemption by a 70 to 30% margin, meaning that there were more people who actually favored that rolling basis exemption, not a fixed one. And this is a group that is, that was convened, and it was a really diverse group of people, individuals who sat on it. There were tenant advocates, there were developers, property owners, landlords, union representatives. And it was, you know, to me, really, when we talk about wanting a lot of folks, you know, a diverse set of folks at the table, that's what it would have looked like, you know. And to me, it's really, it's really problematic that we have a proposed amendment for rent stabilization where I even question who was at the table for that. Like, which council members were at the table, fighting for what were council priorities when it comes to renters, for the housing priorities that we as a council have? Who are the community members there? Well, my concern is that it was investors, you know, folks who aren't even here in our communities that were there making negotiations with city folks. And that's not the type of politics nor business that I want us to be operating in our city here, especially not when we talk about wanting to have, to be operating in politics that is centered around our community members. I, you know, one thing I want to name is, when we were getting a presentation about the proposed amendment, it was said that about 5% of properties in our city would be permanently exempt from rent stabilization. And as I was thinking about that, my question is, I, like genuinely, I wonder, is that a statistic that we should be proud of? Like, 5% of our units ever since 2004 have been newly constructed. And where does that put us in comparison to other cities or even our own city as a whole? To me, if it is something that we should be really proud of, I will be proud of it. But if not, then it also indicates to me that rent stabilization, rent stabilization is not the reason why we have delayed construction, and that there are so many factors, seriously, since 2004, maybe even predating that, about why rent, why construction has been delayed in the first place. And so while there are, while there are talking points from folks about why the permanent exemption, the proposed amendment, original one right now, is good for our city, I really question that. And this just really goes back to the concern that I have around data that council members have not been getting. And these are really important questions for us to consider. One thing I want to, another thing I want to say, too, is that I am seriously concerned about the direction that we are, that we would be going if we were approving a permanent exemption here in our city. Again, I question, like, why is that the step, you know, that folks are, folks at the table here are supporting if it is something that you are supporting, if it is what you, if you're undecided? I would really caution us to think about how we can make sure that we are taking the baby steps that are needed for us to make informed decisions. Because if we do not get the results that we want after a permanent exemption, I will tell you, what is next is going to be a big, big push for, you know, from folks who have already been really opposed to rent stab, to just completely repeal the ordinance. But if we were to support a 30-year exemption today, there's still an option for us to have more options down the road, including a permanent exemption if that was where the political will of the council here was that. So to me, I mean, there's so many different versions of rent stabilization that are implemented right now all across our country, and there's not a single one that is the same. So to me, it indicates that this is really all about political will. This is the political will of the people who are sitting in these seats, making decisions. And my question to folks here is, what is your will? To continue advocating for the people who have fought for an ordinance like this, to make sure that we, as policymakers, are not doing bad policymaking by making decisions that are very rash, that are, that are really catering to investors, catering to folks who don't live here in our communities, and also just really making sure that the direction that we go as a city is going to be getting us to bigger goals, which is the housing justice goals that we want, having a roof over folks, over everybody's head. There's, you know, there's a lot that I still would want to say, but I, what I would do is cap things there. And just want to say overall that I hope that my colleagues at the table will consider the things that I've said and, you know, continue centering the voices of people who've been involved in this process from the start.
Thank you, Ms. Yang. Appreciate your, your comments. And just to clarify for the public hearing, that the amendment you're offering would be a 30-year new construction exemption rather than a 20-year, which is currently the ordinance, and rather than everything since 2004. Vice President Kim?
Yeah. I'm going to save comments for later. I'm just going to introduce my amendment for the sake of just, I guess, having it on the record for public hearing. There is a legal memo that's attached to the public record, as is language. We had copies printed. I'm not 100% sure where those ended up landing. But there are 15, no less than 15 copies wandering around. So I, my A2 amendment is adding a prevailing wage amendment in this proposed language to be eligible for either a new construction exemption or change in occupancy classification exemption. Landlords will have to verify that all construction workers on the project have been paid to the applicable prevailing wage rate as defined by Section 82.07 of the St. Paul Administrative Code. It also requires advance notice to developers of prevailing wage prerequisite, ensures payment of prevailing wage through contractual requirements, requires anti-retaliation and notice of rights posting requirements on development projects, and provides due process procedures for workers who need to file complaints of prevailing wage violations through the City-St. Paul Wage Theft Ordinance. So that is before you today. I'm looking forward to hearing the testimony and looking forward to coming to vote with my colleagues today on this.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Kim. So those are the two amendments that we'll be considering after the public hearing, as I said earlier, and then totally forgot the second after I said it. We will now hold the public hearing. So thanks to you, those of you who are standing for your patience, and welcome, folks up. Remember, two minutes. Start with your name and where you're coming from.
Great. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Lucas Franco. I'm from Minneapolis, but I'm with Leuna, Minnesota and North Dakota. We represent approximately 600 construction workers and other public sector workers here in St. Paul. I'm here to urge a vote yes, to vote yes on the prevailing wage standard for exempted projects, the A2 amendment. This is the best tool we have to prevent wage theft on projects here in St. Paul. Wage theft is a crime, plain and simple. Research has shown that nearly a quarter of Minnesota construction workers are victims. It hurts working families, and it hurts contractors who play by the rules. Many of our 830-plus signatory contractors are consistently losing out on work to those that have built business models off cheating. We've made progress tackling wage theft by expanding prevailing wage protections on publicly subsidized projects, raising penalties and increasing investigative capacity, and appreciate much of the work that has been done here in St. Paul. But the truth is, we're nowhere near stopping the problem. Prevention measures have been applied to publicly financed projects, but this is just a drop in the bucket of construction. I've reviewed years of permitting data here in St. Paul, and many large projects are not, are not, and have not been covered by prevailing wage, and were built by general contractors that consistently use problem contractors. The hard truth is this: We will continue to see wage theft unless we create standards that apply to all construction. We cannot enforce our way out of this. More investigators and higher fines only chase the crime after the fact, and that is not enough. Prevailing wage is the single most effective tool we have to prevent wage theft. Not only does it create a fair wage floor, but it requires certified payroll that is an essential transparency mechanism for prevention. You have the opportunity to implement the strongest wage theft prevention policy available with little to no impact on construction. The market data on this is clear. Also, the research is very clear about cost. This standard would strengthen the industry by protecting high-risk local contractors and ensuring workers can afford to live in the homes they build. Please vote yes.
You are at time.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Don't forget to sign in. Welcome up.
As he just implied, this rent control has affected people's wages. But landlords don't actually get wages. I work on my place all the time. I don't get paid unless we can make a little profit. And we're not that greedy, like it's always attacked by Marxists. And what do Marxists do? They attack property and contract rights. And now that we just got this new law, privacy law prevents me from telling my beloved neighbors that I just had to rent to a murderer downstairs, an artist upstairs, and a burglar next door to you. But thanks a lot. You got another one through. We'll see if a judge calls it unconstitutional next time. But your rent control, the rent control But your rent control, the rent control thing that the people voted for has failed. So now you want to give a discriminative exemption to anything newer than 20 or 30 years? That discriminates against anybody that has an older, smaller property, older than that, takes power from we, the people, and gives it to corporations. What is that exemplary of? Fascism, corporate government cronyism. And big developers and corporations, who do they donate to? Nonprofits that support candidates. What else has it failed on? You lost revenue in the city bureaucracy. Sorry, you're not getting the density you wanted. So you want to feed these big corporations by taking, you know, giving them exemption discriminates against us. It's ridiculous. It's like laws designed to push and targeted people out of a region or a city, like Jim Crow laws or laws in Georgia during the first Democrat, President Stonewall Jackson's administration targeted Cherokee who had constitutionally and legally owned their land and their cities. And now targeting what capitalists? The small guys, the free market capitalists, not the corporatists. Discrimination. It's ridiculous. I'm so sick of this Marxist stuff that's going on. And it's also good, and empathy, no, it exploits empathy to destroy the things that give freedom and opportunity. And I swear, if you get, if, if rent control is allowed to fail, I'll lower my rents because I won't have to defend against the future egregious property taxes.
You're at time, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Restore.
Thanks for signing in, and come on up. Welcome.
Naturally occurring affordable housing competition. It's my turn. Elaine Tyrone, Ward Two. And I'm speaking against this amendment as unamended. I'm very sympathetic with both presenters of the amendments to the amendment, but I'm going to address the fact that this amendment does not move St. Paul closer to the fair housing goals that were so eloquently presented at the start of this meeting. That goal to increase the supply of badly needed housing that is affordable to all, but in particular, especially to low-income residents, those at 10, 20, or 30% of AMI. Quite the opposite. This amendment, if passed, moves in the opposite direction. At a time when more and more fixed-income elders, like myself, retired, many of them have, are financially unprepared, they're surprised to find themselves homeless at a time when they need affordable housing. This amendment allows landlords of new housing to raise rents by any amount at all every year forever. And I oppose that. It is totally inconsistent with fair housing goals. And I urge you to take more time to consider and discuss the data that is out there, to take into account fair wages, to take into account what is actually the impact upon the supply of low, affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make sure to sign in and welcome up.
Hi there. My name's Jeanette Corselius. I am a renter in St. Paul. I am also a union member of OPEIU Local 12, and I'm a proud member of the Twin Cities Democratic Socialists of America. I moved here three years ago for a union job, and one of the reasons why I moved to the Twin Cities was its affordability, and one of the reasons being that it had rent stabilization. I want to be very clear that I support the amendment for the prevailing wage as a union member and a union organizer. I am against any efforts to weaken rent stabilization. I am confused by some of the comments that have been made by some of y'all, saying you care about renter protections, you care about banning the box, but you want to make changes to rent stabilization? Do we not care about working-class people and people in poverty? Do we not care about Black, Brown, and Indigenous people of color who need affordable housing? I am also a community organizer, and I drive between the two cities, and I see many homeless, Indigenous people. If we cannot ensure that people who have a middle-class income can't afford to live in the cities, how are we going to make sure that our friends and our neighbors who don't have a wage and are homeless won't have a living and a safe place to live? I want to be clear that the Democratic Socialists of America, who are in the St. Paul branch, are against Mayor Carter's proposed amendment to exempt all rentals built after 2004. 94.1% of us oppose it, none support.
I'm sorry, you're at time. Thank you very much for your testimony. Make sure to sign in.
I will end my statement by saying, please do the right thing and put working-class people first.
Come on up. Welcome. Two minutes is very short. I hate keeping you to it, but it's out of respect for everyone who's here to testify. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Chupansky. I'm a renter in Ward Four. I've already testified on this, but I wanted to express strong support for both Council Member Yang and Council Member Kim's amendments. I also just wanted to remind the council of how overwhelmingly this city supported rent stabilization. So 60% of Ward One voters voted yes, 55% of Ward Two voters voted yes, 46% of Ward Three voters, 57% of Ward Four voters, 54% of Ward Five voters, 51% of Ward Six voters, and 53% of Ward Seven voters said in no uncertain terms that they want more financial stability around rents for renters. And over the past several years, there have been multiple acquiescence to the landlord and developer lobbies. And I would just say that if today, once again, the developers and the landlords win, I would really appeal to all of you who seem to be really in support of tenant protections to ask, what's next? What are we going to do next to actually deal with the problem of increasing rents? And I would point out that by reducing the number of people who have rental protections, we're actually reducing the number of people who have the tenant protection of just cause as well. So kind of going in both directions today. So I just want to say thank you to council members Yang and Kim, and I would urge the other council members to support those amendments.
Thank you very much. Welcome up.
Hello, I'm Tony Cambada. I reside in Cottage Grove. I just wanted to comment that that election where we enacted the stabilization ordinance was an off-year election, and I think a little over 30,000 people voted in that election in favor or against rent control. So I think that's hardly a full representation of the city's will for or against it. I'm in favor of either of the two amendments, but I think neither of them go far enough. Prior to rent control, I raised my rents by an average of about 1.15% a year. Prior to rent control, as a whole, in the Twin Cities, rents raised by less than 2% on average. That's not to say that there weren't individual cases where something may have gone awry, but historically, it was less than 2%. After rent control, just, now it's 3%, 3% every year, because the floor becomes the ceiling, or the ceiling becomes the floor. And numerous studies have been done on rent control, most notably a Stanford University study, which cited that that would happen. My other units outside of St. Paul, I raise rents when the tenants leave. They might not get an increase in four or five years. But because of rent control, I have to maintain that, or lose it, or face challenges with that. And rent control, while well-meaning, has adverse effects on affordable housing. Housing permit applications are down 80% from where they were prior to this stabilization ordinance. That's for a number of reasons, but notwithstanding the fact that this deters development in St. Paul. So I'm asking you to be objective, look at the empirical data, and follow your mission of increasing affordable housing. This hurts affordable housing. So please try and enable a stable ecosystem for tenants, landlords, and DSI, who has to try and manage it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Don't forget to sign in. Well, you already signed in, but you can do it again. Welcome up.
Thank you. My name is Jim Ellie. I represent the Party for Socialism and Liberation here in the Twin Cities. The proposed amendment to Chapter 19, or 193A.08, extending rent control exemptions from 20 to 30 years, and Mayor Carter's proposal, which hopefully y'all are not considering, is a clear betrayal of public trust. The city's 2022 Rent Stabilization Stakeholder Group report that Councilwoman Yang mentioned recommended to you a 15-year rent extension, which is still giving much more consideration to the landlords than the city residents, who are experiencing a combination of economic crises, environmental crises, and housing crises that they have no control over until the state gives them more and more rights and protections. What's to stop this exemption that is being proposed in the amendment from 20 years to 30 years to 40, until, again, we have this conversation 15 years from now and it's completely eliminated? For all the new construction that's being built to help citizens have housing that isn't under threat of homelessness in the next week or two, when they get hit by a massive health care bill? Every one of us, every working-class person, is a bill away from being homeless. And to prevent them from having rent control on new buildings, which majority of buildings in St. Paul are becoming built after 2004, they will lose that ability to have control over their home, and they could easily become homeless. And for the people saying that landlords don't make money, they don't even work. They own these properties and let us, working class, pay their wages. So to complain about working-class people who could be homeless while you have control over their homes is a disgrace. And to give them capitulations over the working class is also a disgrace. We need to invest into our housing for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make sure to sign in. Welcome up. I'd like to ask all those of us in the audience to please remain quiet, and if you want to have a conversation, you can take it outside. Welcome.
Thank you. Kevin Pranis. I'm a resident of Ward Four, also a member of Launa. I didn't intend to testify, but read the city attorney's letter in this matter and just wanted to respond to some misunderstandings in that letter. The letter makes two legal objections. First, saying that prevailing wage requirements can only be applied to publicly funded projects. And second, says the state does not publish rates that cover residential projects of 12 or more units, and then makes a remarkable claim that this cannot be remedied without changes to Minnesota statute. I'm happy to report that none of those things are true. There's basic factual errors based on misunderstanding of the state prevailing wage laws, which we're happy to clarify and can easily be verified by talking to the Department of Labor and Industry. In fact, I texted the commissioner just now to verify one of these points. In Minnesota, prevailing wage requirements can be and currently are applied to projects that are financed with public funds, mixed public and private funds, and purely private funds. Examples of purely private funds include all energy projects funded through the renewable development account, which are not public dollars, and every energy project permitted by the state Public Utility Commission, transmission, and large generation, all of which are privately funded and financed and covered by state prevailing wage requirements that the legislature passed a couple of years ago. The simple fact is that state prevailing wages are used to set floors also for projects that are not covered by state prevailing wage requirements, including municipal and school construction. And in fact, the city of St. Paul covers, uses state wage rates to cover projects that are not covered by state prevailing wage laws. So that's entirely incorrect. The other question, that the state does not publish rates specific to projects, are 12 or more units, is also inaccurate. All multifamily projects of the size specified by the proposed amendment are considered commercial construction for purposes of assigning appropriate rates, and there should be no confusion over rates. Since the number 12 is larger than the number two, all of those rates would be commercial construction. We'd happily send the links for Ramsey County for all of those rates. So neither of those is accurate. Now, obviously, problems with legislation can almost always be remedied, and I think the decision to not remedy it is because people don't want to.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Make sure to sign in. Welcome up.
Good afternoon, Council President and members of the council. My name is Cara Peterson. I'm president of the St. Paul Regional Labor Federation. I'm here today to encourage the council to support a prevailing wage amendment to the city of St. Paul's rent stabilization ordinance. The St. Paul Regional Labor Federation unanimously adopted a resolution in support of a prevailing wage amendment. This was communicated to a previous council under Council President Brendon. Some of you will remember that. When construction workers are paid the prevailing wage, they are better able to afford rent payments. Payment of prevailing wage has also been shown to increase wage rates of workers outside of the construction industry. St. Paul's families continue to struggle to afford the cost of rent, and amending the city's rent stabilization ordinance will benefit construction workers in the city who work on multifamily projects. Wage theft has been documented in the multifamily construction industry in the Twin Cities, according to the testimony of workers and advocates, and it is a significant and growing problem in Minnesota's construction industry. Researchers at the Midwest Economic Policy Institute estimate that approximately 26% of Minnesota's construction workers have been victims of wage theft. Prevention of wage theft on multifamily construction projects is in the city of St. Paul's interest and its residents' interest as well, because it protects workers from unlawful treatment, local businesses from unfair competition, and taxpayers from subsidizing the underpayment of workers through higher taxes. We're urging the city to create a prevailing wage prerequisite as a condition of any exemption of multifamily residential rental properties containing 12 or more units that are newly constructed or had a change in occupancy classification after the December 31st, 2004 or earlier. Payment of prevailing wage to construction workers promotes the quality of construction and the durability of residential buildings, and thereby increases the available stock of rental housing. We encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Make sure to sign in. Welcome up.
Good evening. I think it's about that time now. Council President Naker, members of the city council, thank you very much for this opportunity to address you today on a matter that is not only significant, but so deeply personal to many of us in the community. I appreciate your willingness to engage in this complex and often controversial topic, recognizing the emphasis on a multitude of perspectives and concerns. As we gather here, it is essential to acknowledge the pressing need for our community. St. Paul is at a crossroads, and the decisions that you make today will shape the future for our city for generations to come. We are facing challenges that are not just numbers on a page, they are the realities of our neighbors, our friends, and our families. The lack of housing is not merely an inconvenience, it's a crisis that is driving up costs and limiting options for our residents. Families are struggling to find homes they can afford. Young professionals are being forced to look elsewhere for opportunities. This is not a future that we envisioned for St. Paul. We must take action and reverse the trend. I stand before you today not only to advocate for the end of rent stabilization, but to also urge you to consider prevailing wage. This is not just about economics, it's about dignity, respect, and a promise for a better life for hard-working women and men of our city. Prevailing wage has a long and proud history in St. Paul, and they have always been the cornerstone of our commitment to creating opportunities for our workforce. By using prevailing wage, we can ensure that our workers are compensated fairly for their labor, which in turn stimulates the local economy. When people earn a living wage, they can invest in their families, their homes, and their community. This is how we build a thriving St. Paul, by creating better quality, well-paying careers that provide real pathways for our residents. Let us not forget our community... Am I done? Thank you very much.
It's a good ending, though. Thank you. Come on up.
Good afternoon or evening, Council President Naker, members of the council. I'm Aaron Rosenthal, Research Director with North Star Policy Action in St. Paul, think tank advancing evidence-based solutions for working Minnesotans. I'm also a lifelong St. Polite, born and raised in Summit University, a proud St. Paul Central graduate, and a Hamlin Midway resident. I'm here today to urge you to vote yes on the prevailing wage amendment to prevent what may be the most prevalent form of theft in our city: wage theft. One in four Minnesota construction workers are wage theft victims. Statewide, 316,000 workers experience wage theft each year, losing $6.2 billion in compensation. To put that in perspective, wage theft affects 30 times more people than auto theft in Minnesota, and the total amount stolen from workers is 160 times greater than the value of all cars stolen. St. Paul rightly responded to rising auto theft with urgency and innovation, becoming a national model. I'm asking you to do the same to wage theft. Wage theft is also a taxpayer issue. Up to $1.3 billion in Minnesota tax revenue is lost every year for programs like unemployment insurance, leaving St. Paul taxpayers to pick up the bill. A final victim of wage theft are honest employers, who must choose between being underbid by those committing wage theft or exploiting their own workers. Only government intervention can stop this race to the bottom. Fortunately, there's a solution. As you consider exempting new housing from rent control, you're offering a substantial financial benefit. That benefit... That benefit should come with the same condition that St. Paul already places on publicly-financed projects: require a prevailing wage that ensures the fair pay and transparent payrolls able to prevent wage theft from happening in the first place. This city is rightly pairing rent control exemptions with tenant protections, but renters aren't the only ones who need safeguarding. So do St. Paul workers, who should be able to afford to live in the homes they build. Again, I urge you to vote yes on the prevailing wage amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening, Council President Naker and members of the council. My name is Joe Fowler, and I'm the Business Manager of Laborers Local 563. We represent more than 10,000 members across Minnesota and North Dakota. I personally began my career more than 26 years ago in the laborers' union, probably about 20 of which were in some form of management, whether it be field management or in the union office for the last 12 years, I believe. And I've also had the honor of serving on a couple of the councils that the governor has appointed me to, the Governor's Economic Expansion Council a few years ago, and currently I fill a seat on the MinSETHA, Minnesota Climate Innovation Finance Authority, as the organized labor seat there as well. And I'm here to speak positively and supportively of Councilmember Kim's amendment in regards to prevailing wage. Couple of things that, including prevailing wage in any rent control exempted project, regardless of how long that rent control exemption is, would do is, first, it ensures that our construction workers building St. Paul's affordable housing, multifamily housing, can actually afford to live there themselves in the places that they build. And when workers earn a living wage, they tend to spend it locally, which is an economic force multiplier by its increasing the tax base in St. Paul, as well as the development that happens in St. Paul. Second, it levels the playing field for our good contractors that do work here, both union and non-union, who already pay a fair wage and follow the rules. It prevents exploitation of those workers, who are predominantly immigrant, both documented and undocumented, construction workers that end up taking the brunt of that wage theft. And it does so by creating a higher-quality housing that lasts longer and has less repairs. And it should not be controversial to attach prevailing wage to a rent control exempted project. We have major developers and contractors, like Ryan Companies, whether it's Frana, whether it's Watson Forsberg, whether it's your aptly named St. Paul Port Authority, all of which pay the prevailing wage on all of their projects, all of which can compete with a level playing field.
You are at time. Thank you very much. Don't forget to sign in. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Carl Berg. I am a resident of Ward Three in St. Paul and an upcoming graduate student at the U of M. I want to say I endorse both of the amendments, especially the amendment by Councilwoman Kim. But I also wanted to highlight, as Councilmember Yang pointed, the potential negative effects of continued exemptions within the rent stabilization system. I specifically want to highlight a study done or published in the Journal of Housing Economics, which was a meta-analysis looking at over 100 published studies on the effects of rent control globally. And one of the most common potential side effects of a tiered system of rent controlled in cities is that you have one section of the housing market which is impacted by less mobility, or essentially, like, people, because the rent is so low, they do not want to leave, even if, like, the utility of the location is less than what they want. And then the flip side of that is that newer developments, as a result, have, generally speaking, had higher rates of rent increase as a result. So essentially, you will have one side of the market which has lower mobility, people are not leaving, if anything, it shrinks over time as people try to, like, especially like landlords, especially try to, like, exit or, like, convert their properties into, you know, like, houses or whatnots. And then you have the other side, which they are not exempt whatsoever, or they are, sorry, they are exempt from the stabilization policy, and as a result, they generally are more likely to then increase their rent, which, generally speaking, is not necessarily a good thing, so. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Don't forget to sign in. Welcome up. And just sort of a semi-last call, if you're here to testify on item 34, please line up now.
Good evening. My name is Kim Nelson. I'm Minnesota Deputy Political Director for North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters, also known as the Carpenters Union. We're located at 700 Olive Street here in St. Paul. Councilmembers, residents of St. Paul, thank you on behalf of our 27,000 construction workers we represent. Many of our skilled tradespeople live in St. Paul, and thousands more have been trained through our carpenters' training institute here. Our members have been part of living in and building this great city for over 100 years. We appreciate the city council working to address a few major unintended consequences that have occurred from the passage of rent stabilization. We also appreciate the city council's intention to want to do right by the residents of St. Paul and work on affordable housing issues that can often be nuanced and multilayered. However, rent stabilization has led to some very real consequences for our members, their families, and businesses. Foremost, it has discouraged housing supply, as we have seen a drastic decrease in financing and building of new construction. Yet we know increasing housing supply is a key factor to keeping rents low and housing affordable. Many developers have halted construction, and more had projects planned but decreased the size of those projects. As was stated earlier, in 2024, St. Paul saw an immediate 80% decrease in multifamily unit permits after the passage of rent stabilization. And as recently as this past month, construction permits have seen a 38% increase in the 13th County metro area, but St. Paul lags. All of this directly affects the livelihoods of our members who want to live and work in St. Paul, and we have seen more layoffs than in any other year. We thank the city council and city staff for your work and leadership to address this issue, and we respectfully ask that you support the version 1 change to Chapter 193A.08.
Thank you very much. Make sure to sign in. Welcome up.
All right. Good evening, council, council chair and council committee. So I'm Kalik Rogers, Executive Director of Catalyst for Systems Change, formerly homeless youth, graduate of St. Paul Colleges and St. Paul High School. And I'm here in support of the proposed amendment about rent control, but also how we can rewrite a new narrative for the city of St. Paul. We have an opportunity to lead a cross-sector and intergenerational approach, bringing together youth, elders, developers, policy leaders, and community members, such as in this room today, to co-create a cost-effective and innovative solution to our city's affordable housing and homelessness crisis. This moment requires us to shift from well-intended and short-sighted solutions to long-term strategies to deliver sustainable impact. Amending the rent control is one important step, but it must be part of a broader vision that protects renters while also encouraging responsible development and investment in our communities. It's not either-or, it's both-and. St. Paul can lead the way by embracing collaboration, equity, and long-term thinking. Ultimately, let's try to build a city where our solutions reflect the complexities of the problem and the dignity of the people most affected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make sure to sign in. Welcome up.
Good afternoon, almost evening, members of the city council. And ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe Nathan. I've lived in St. Paul for 50 years. Our children have attended St. Paul public schools. My wife and I have both been public school teachers. We have deep respect for unions, and we have deep interest in, and have worked for decades to try to increase the supply of affordable housing. The question was asked about half an hour ago, what's the research? And I want to cite two quick pieces of research, one done by USC professors that was published in 2022, and one published by a lecturer at the University of Minnesota, published earlier this year. This information, by the way, was shared with you, and I apologize if it was not shared in a way that was clear. First, in the 2022 study, the USC researchers pointed out that the dramatic results, that's their word, dramatic results of rent control, which questionably was well-intended. They said there was a $1.6 million drop in property values here in St. Paul. They also said, quote, "The realized impact of the law was the opposite, was the opposite of its intention." A second researcher, this person, a lecturer at the University of Minnesota, said that rent control in St. Paul has led to an alarming drop-off in housing production, which means a well-intended policy has backfired and is worsening the housing crunch for renters. Kalik Rogers and I have proposed, met with a number of you, we'll be meeting with others, to talk about ways that the school district, charter schools, the city, and the county can work together to increase the supply of affordable housing. That's what's really needed. We urge you to support the recommendations of the council chair and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make sure to sign in. Welcome up. And this will be our final call for, I feel like an airline pilot, for the public hearing tonight. If you're here to testify on 34 Rent Stabilization, please line up now. Welcome.
Yes, I'm Jean Givensheim from St. Paul, Ward Four, and former landlord. The bottom line is that we need to prioritize people over profits. I'm a member of Micah St. Paul and a member of St. Timothy Lutheran in St. Paul. We value immigrants, the LGBTQ+ community, and all of our neighbors. Housing is more than a business, it is a basic human right. As an adoptive parent of children whose early childhood was marked by homelessness, I know the profound, lifelong impact housing insecurity has. The need for housing is best fulfilled when we realize that people are more important than profits. My faith, my basic human values, call me to make this testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make sure to sign in. Welcome up.
One person, one vote. Councilmember Bowie, who had a 20% vote in favor of the rent stabilization in Ward One. Councilmember Povodsky, that was a 15% vote. Ryan Construction, though, they've got one vote and billions of dollars. They were part of the $4 million campaign against rent stabilization, and many of you ran against opponents that were financed by that same group of multifamily developers. And you made it through, and I'm very happy for that. But this is, once again, you know, I was part of the HENS campaign when we got this passed, and they're always saying, you gotta win twice. You gotta win at the ballot box, and then you gotta win to implement. And as a coalition, we haven't been winning at implementing. That's why I support the 30% or the 30-year exemption, because it's better than a forever exemption. I totally support the prevailing wage proposal, even though it's benefiting some unions that haven't been supporting the rent stabilization, but because it's right for workers and it's right for renters if we have a cap on the industry. I mean, as I said before in my last testimony, it is, the tenant protections are a reasonable regulation of an industry that has human value at its core, the value of housing, of providing housing. So is rent stabilization. There have been plenty of cities that have had it for a long time, where the economies have not collapsed. But right here, right now, Ryan Companies, Cecil Smith, billionaire, you remember the last time we testified? He talked about, I was in a fancy Chicago place, and there was billions of dollars looking to invest. Those are the same people that took our mortgage industry and made it financial and dumped us. And that's, as I see it, you got people versus profits. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Make sure to sign in. And it looks like our last testifier is coming right up.
Hello, my name is Nick Noatarski. I lead the multifamily development business at Widener Apartment Homes. My company is the developer of the multifamily portion of Highland Bridge, which will create over 1,000 new homes in your community, and will be prevailing wage and also lead certified projects. We're a national apartment owner, builder. We own over 31 properties in the state of Minnesota, over 7,000 units. We are, in a sense, local in that way. We are very invested in this community. Over the last five years, we've doubled our unit count, our home count, in the state. You know, our goal as a company is to provide high-quality housing. We are a long-term owner, builder. We try to do everything as best as we can. We really focus on building something that a community is going to be proud of, and that is going to stand the test of time. You know, we have, I mean, you see the vision for Highland Bridge. It's going to be beautiful. We are so close, we've worked countless hours to move it forward. After rent control was put in place, we went on pause. I think, you know, it's fundamental on this project to say, a 30-year exemption is not enough. If it's a 30-year exemption, we are not moving forward. It's, we want to be there, we want to do it. It affects our ability to get debt and equity financing. We will not move forward if there is a 30-year exemption. It needs to be a static date. Like I said, we see the vision for the community, we want to be here, we love St. Paul, we love Minnesota. We can see the vision, we want to move it forward, but this is where at least my company is. Thank you.
Thanks. Don't forget to sign in. Is there one more person to testify? All right. Come on up. Last testifier.
I want to say, please stop pushing the little men out. We need the small, local landlords.
Would you just say your name and where you're coming from?
St. Paul.
And your name?
Camer Cami.
Thank you so much. Make sure to sign in. All right, with that, I'm going to take a motion from Mr. Povodsky to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Seven in favor and unopposed, the public hearing is closed.
I want to thank everybody for coming out to testify tonight. I know it was lengthy, and will now take a moment to consider the testimony that we've heard and to actually discuss the amendments that were mentioned earlier, to vote on them, and then to, depending on what happens with the amendments, potentially to vote on the full proposal. So I would look to either Ms. Yang or Vice President Kim to formally make your motion. Ms. Yang?
Thanks, Council President. I move approval of my amendment, which would be to strike out the 20 years in the exceptions for residential property that is newly constructed or had a change in occupancy classification and changing it to 30 years.
Great. So that is Amendment A1 in Legistar. Thanks, Ms. Yang. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Jost and Ms. Johnson?
Thank you so much, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Yang, for your time on this, and thank you to everyone that came here today to testify. I want to talk about the amendment that's being brought forth for the 30-year exemption. And just with a little bit of background, you know, it's my understanding, you have the lead author of this primary rent stabilization amendment, that the 20-year new construction exemption, which is from 2022, was intended to address the city's development concerns at that time with the original rent stabilization ordinance. However, I believe that that exemption failed to meet the needs of builders in a much stronger development market. And unfortunately, our situation has become worse, and it has not gotten better. This 30-year exemption, in my opinion, is an outdated request that no longer meets the moment. The people who are building our housing are asking for something more now, three years later. And it's our understanding that private capital is not investing in rent-stabilized environments, so whether it's a 20-year or a 30-year, that just doesn't provide the reassurance of the market. So regardless of the timing and the financing, they need to be able to understand, you know, the payoff of that financing, when it's being sold, and any subsequent sale after that if they own property. And so we heard from folks, like I mentioned in the public hearing, I guess a month ago, folks that own property, that rent stabilization had decreased the value of that property. And if there is an endpoint to that exemption, that would impact how investors and lenders look at building and investing in property in the city of St. Paul. So I believe that a clear point in time exemption would provide the predictability and the assurance to developers and property owners that are weighing St. Paul against other regional markets, and I will not be supporting the 30-year amendment today.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Jost. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I appreciate, one, I just want to say thank you to everyone who took the time to come out to give public comment, either last month, through many different iterations of testimony, what came from that testimony, and something that I'm actually glad that we're having this discussion. From the first time I sat in the budget address in August of last year and heard about the permanent new construction exemption, I received a call a week prior, and that was the first time I'd ever heard about the new construction exemption being considered at all. And at the time, for the previous year, basically, I had spent most times talking to individuals about a 30-year new construction exemption. There were questions about it. We actually had a chance to, you know, temp check where folks were at and what people were doing. were doing. Some of the same organizations who are actually supportive of the new construction exemption now were on record supporting the 30-year exemption. We're pushing for candidates at the time to support a 30-year exemption. So I just, you know, I'll be supporting this amendment today because I don't necessarily think that it's fair to say something's outdated when you never really posed the question or never really gave the opportunity even to entertain a 30-year new construction exemption. We never brought it up last year. We never brought it up for the council for discussion or even to remotely entertain it. We just jumped straight to a permanent new construction exemption conversation. And I don't think councilmembers even had a chance to pause and really even react to the 30-year new construction exemption request. And so I'll just share it from my vantage point and even from what I'm hearing in community and community partners and community organizations. There were many Isaiah testimonies last time that also shared the 30-year exemption. I know I've had tough conversations with housing advocates who were never centered in the media's conversations surrounding permanent new construction exemptions, about how they felt about it. And I remember having hard conversations with them, even to get them to the place of being able to be willing to accept a 30-year new construction exemption. And so I, you know, will be supporting that, and I also will be supporting prevailing wage. I know we haven't gotten there yet. But one thing I will share with you is that this conversation around this new construction exemption has not felt like a negotiation. I think for months, I've been wanting to see our body really actually dive into all of the options that we could have explored. And I don't feel like we did that. And so my support today for both the prevailing wage amendments and for the 30-year new construction exemption amendment really stems from that place. When we make policy decisions, and especially when we make community promises to constituents, and we have important ballot initiatives that come through that folks expect us to act on, if we don't go back to the public with the same type of remedies that we are trying to put forward, we lose a large body of people. Out of curiosity in this room right now, who are the renters? Is there anyone who's currently a renter? Thank you in the back. Thank you. But you have your hand up. The point is, there's about five of you, and I could count on one hand about how many renters are in the room right now. I could do that last week. I could do that the week before. I could do that at every community event that I have. And I represent a ward that's half renters, half homeowners. And in a space where we did have an election, we did have individuals who did vote on that, nobody asked if I was prepared to really make the jump from a 30-year to a new permanent construction exemption before it was made public in August. And I think one of the biggest things now is that we've had months to have this conversation, but we never fully gave amendments fully, like the breadth that they needed. We never really entertained alternatives. We never really explored with renters and community members about, hey, let's get you up to speed with why we're making a 30-year jump from 20 years to permanent. And for me, that is the problem. That therein lies the problem with everybody's testimonies, regardless of our partners and our spaces, and I really appreciate it. But what in lies the problem with this is that we went from 20 years to permanent with no discussion about anything in between. And that's been, what's been very disappointing to me, and I just genuinely really want to plant that seed here, especially for future conversations and how we do policy. I'm open for adjusting to the times, being reflective of the development, understanding that our downtown and our Highland Bridge site and so many other places are experiencing difficulties that maybe they didn't experience in 2023, 2024. But I also know that I watched mailers get sent to my house actively opposing me, being a councilmember, because there was a candidate who actively supported a 30-year exemption at the time, and I was not prepared at that time to support that. And I recognized how despite that and in lieu of that, my community stood by me and put me in the seat. And so as I, you know, think about the votes today, I will be using that as my deciding factor for it. And it's not because I at all haven't had many conversations with so many people in this room. I consider my union supporters and my union partners and contracting partners, development partners, property manager partners to be equally as important in this matter and in this equation. But at the end of the day, I represent 46,000 people in a ward that truly doesn't benefit from this discussion. And so I will be supporting 30-year exemption because I do think that there's going to have to be pathways in the future, especially surrounding this ordinance. I don't think people are prepared to just let it rest. I hope that for all of my colleagues that are voting today on the permanent new construction exemption, that we are in a position as a council to set a strong message that we are no longer going to continue this conversation next year and use the same arguments about why we need to fully repeal. I will be actively opposed to it then. And so I look forward to being able to have continued conversations with people about the real problem of rent control that people are sharing, because I don't think this even scratches the surface to really talking about the root cause. And for a lot of people, that is, can I pay my rent month to month? For others, it's, if I can't afford to build here, maybe I won't be able to invest in St. Paul. I just don't know if a permanent new construction exemption really fixes that. So I will be supporting the 30-year exemption, and I just think prevailing wage separately is just kind of a duh situation. When we look at what we want to support and how we want to pay our workers, I'm going to always side in the sense that I feel like we should be paying them equitably, we should be paying them fairly. I sat in meetings earlier this week talking to private investors who had private funding and private financing, just about why they needed to potentially even partner with union contractors and getting union projects on it. When it's an option, it's not a requirement, but when it's an option, people may choose to privately finance their projects and just not take the public sector funding, not take the city funding if they can, and not pay their workers what they're supposed to. That's why I was consistent on supporting wage theft. That's why I'm someone who advocates tenant protections. That's why I was a supporter of administrative citations. I have a history of continuing to support workers and their fair wages. So like, for me, these are really genuinely the problem in lies with the approach and our process, and just the mere fact that we didn't even for once consider openly an alternative to what we were given. So I appreciate Council Vice President Kim for bringing forward the prevailing wage amendment, and Councilmember Yang's for your 30-year amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. Vice President Kim?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I plan on supporting Councilmember Yang's amendment. I think the question that we had earlier today at HRA is, I think, it begs the question, 30, 40, 25, 15, like, I guess, prove it. I really haven't seen anything that shows that it's a requirement for financing, like, a never-ending exemption. Your financing will expire, and we will still have a different housing market, we will still have different financing options, we will still have a very different, the landscape will constantly change. And so we have to make decisions now based on what, the information that we have. And I still, I have yet to see any proof that shows, I guess, the burden of the truth that demonstrates that developers are unable to make the plan work based on, like, an unlimited exemption to all of this. So I'm skeptical, and I will just also add, initially when Councilmember Yang approached me about this amendment, I said no, because this is honestly completely, like, so far off the conversation that I want us to be having, which is, St. Paul voters passed one of the strongest rent stabilization ordinances in the country to protect renters, to protect working-class families, to protect Black and Brown and immigrant folks here in our city. And even adjusting it, I think, was just a slide in the face that we cannot trust voters that vote us in to make decisions about their livelihood and their ability to house their families. Given more thought, being a single no for everything is not always the most useful. And what I'm offering, why I'm supporting the amendment today is because it, while I have sort of similar criticisms, as I know Councilmember Yang does as well, it's offering a harm reduction opportunity for us to revisit it. An unlimited approach gives no cap at all for us to revisit. And so it's to name that this is not even the conversation that I want to be having around the value that we place on our renters. We are a majority city of renters. We hear that time and time again. I will be supporting the amendment, and I still remain critical of the data that we have yet to see. And in addition, the last thing is, we had a really great presentation from the Alliance, and there's nothing that correlates around stabilization that calls development. Cities that don't have rent stabilization have very similar development trends as we do, and actually, we're doing better than some. And we have rent stabilization. But the data that I actually really want to see is how is rent stabilization actually working for renters? How are they feeling when they're able to afford food a little bit easier that month, that year, when they find a good landlord that's willing to adjust to their needs? So I want to see that data, and I also be really interested in seeing the data of how many times we actually offer exemptions. Right now, what is our rate of exemption? Can anyone tell me? For the number of applications that we receive at the city for rent stabilization, how many, what percent of those applications are exempted? So I will end there, and I have more to say for the other one, but I'm looking forward to supporting this amendment.
Thanks, Vice President. Other comments, Mr. Prowazki?
Thank you, President Nicker. First, I will just say, it is our job as council members to ask for the information from departments. It's our job as council members to suggest, bring up, create spaces to talk about ideas that we want brought forward. So I will just name, any one of us can convene a space, we can hold an event, we can talk to our colleagues, we can ask departments for information. I just want to state that it's on all of us to do that work day in and day out, and I appreciate the fact that people feel boxed in by the process. There's no one that feels more boxed in by this process than me, starting four weeks ago and voting on this today. So I both acknowledge and share the level of frustration of the pace and the confined nature of what we're supposed to decide. But I also just want to name, all of us have the responsibility to sort of raise those conversations and work with each other when we want something different to be happening. So I will just name that. This decision is the hardest of the day for me, only because I think in a vacuum, there would be a lot of logic to pursue something like this. I do think for me, all the decisions today are unbelievably tight and unbelievably frustrating. I'll be voting no, mostly because as much as we talk about the opportunity this would provide, to continue talking about this, to have more opportunity to have this be on the table, I'm just as frustrated as having to have this fight and this conversation every single year, year after year after year, and the drain it puts on community members, the drain it puts on city staff, the drain it puts on our partner organizations, the drain it puts on our general political oxygen in the city to have the energy to try and pursue housing solutions bigger than this. We're ultimately talking about how to regulate privately-financed properties when we could be talking about how to leverage our public funds more directly, how to make changes that are giving tenants the opportunity to purchase, all these different things. So I very, very much appreciate the way Councilmember Yang has approached this. She has directly spoken with me. She has raised this issue, and it's a tough decision, but I unfortunately will have to vote no.
Thanks, Mr. Prowazki. Other comments? We'll go to Ms. Bowie and then Ms. Yang. Ms. Bowie?
Well, thank you. I really appreciate your words, Councilmember Prowazki, about just like the frustration around this. I do have to say, like, I wholeheartedly appreciate everyone who came out, and I do appreciate the question that was asked around who was in the room, who was represented in this conversation, and seeing that we do not have a balance of renters, a balance of those who have been impacted by this. And I just think, you know, oftenly, as my role as a council member is to remember those conversations that's on the doors, remember what voters, whether people voted for me or not, what residents of Ward One care about. And time and time again, I have heard from individuals in my ward requesting for a full repeal of the rent stabilization. I don't want that to be lost in this conversation around how we got here is already a huge compromise to where I have to hold those who are, want to invest and want to grow our tax base and our St. Paulers and our homeowners, also ensuring we're supporting and giving a voice to the voiceless, to our renters, to people who are living paycheck to paycheck, for people who have experienced homelessness, to people who are just looking to, not even by choice, but looking for housing that is just affordable. And not one time, and I have to be honest, not one time did I hear the gratitude particularly around, or the impacts around the benefits of the rent control policy. I have heard from our council members, particularly around wanting more data, and this needs to be a data-driven decision, but the reality is, this was a ballot-driven decision. As an organizer and always an organizer, you know, I know what it takes to get people, to persuade people to get to the ballot and make a decision. But we had failed at the place of implementation, and I had stepped into this role as a council member, ensuring that we can grow our housing stock in an effective way, and was really disappointed to find out that we're stuck on the debate about this instead of actually having the conversation of how we can invest and finance more affordable housing, how we can protect workers, how we can grow our tax base to create more jobs in our cities, to design a program to actually implement and regulate essentially this policy that voters had trusted us to actually bring forth. So I would not be supporting this 30-year exemption because I believe it doesn't actually get to the goal of growing. What's most important to voters is housing availability and housing accessibility. Essentially, I think what this does is pushing away people who want to invest in our local economy, our homeowners, and also putting the price and the burden on our, and on our residents, everyone who pays property taxes. It's not only our homeowners, our taxpayers, our renters. They pay into our economy. And we have got to a point where we can measure the loss and the economic devastation it has caused to us, but we have not been able to measure the benefits to the families. I know, you know, by saying that we want to see data, I was proud to vote last year on investing $100,000 into conducting a study. I am overly eager for us to invest in that study, to actually, you know, look and evaluate the impacts of this. But I don't think a 30-year exemption will rectify the issues that my residents have been facing. And primarily, I see this as a false safety net in a way to where we really want to talk about housing affordability, like, let's make sure we're tripling, doubling down when it comes to emergency rental assistance. Let's make sure we're actually investing into affordable, sustainable wages. Let's make sure we do all those things. But we can't, we can't cap or regulate our way into housing abundance. So I will not be supporting this exemption.
Thanks, Ms. Bowie. Ms. Yang?
Thank you, Council President. I will make a few comments here. First, I really appreciate just hearing from everybody, and Councilmember Prowazki, to your point about we, as councilmembers, have a role in asking questions, getting information. I mean, I think you're saying that in response to the multiple comments made at the table here around, we need more data. And I want to be really clear, those asks have been made by councilmembers, including our former council president, Mitra Jalali, when she was still here. And I mentioned in my statements earlier, we've yet to see that information. And Councilmember Bowie, I'm really glad you brought up the 100K that the council secured on our own initiative for a study for rent stabilization, because we didn't, haven't been getting that data. And that's an achievement and also a win from the council here that I'm really proud of. And I also want to name that that study is something that hasn't been brought to life yet. It's still something that is being crafted right now. So part of me is, you know, as a budget chair and also a councilmember, a colleague of everybody here, I'm feeling like, goodness, we should just stop wasting each other's time. If this is something that we really cared about, like, we need to follow through with it and actually put in the work and, you know, make that study happen, get the information that we need, and use that as the data needed for us to make changes to policies, instead of just basing policy decisions off of rhetoric, off of fear-mongering rhetoric, especially in our communities here. And you've all heard me say the word, the term "bad policymaking" a couple of times today already, and I truly believe that we are in a position where we are headed that way with rent stabilization. But I'm very supportive of that study overall and would want to make sure that we see that come into fruition. I mean, you mentioned affordable wages. I hope that you will be a supporter of the prevailing wage amendment that is being brought forward by Councilmember Kim then, because that is, Council Vice President Kim, because that is essentially what that amendment is all about. And we know that when we are supporting workers to be able to make living wages, we can support them in being able to afford rent and have a home over their head, too. So those are the things I wanted to just name, and I am ready to bring this to a vote if folks are, too.
Great. Looks like Ms.
If we can do roll call, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll do roll call. But Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I just want to also just share, Councilmember Prowazki, I hope that that was your comment, or in an assumption that those things had have been done. was your comments, weren't an assumption that those things had have been done. If that was the case, that's highly inaccurate. And so I just want to share with you, like, I take my role as a council member very seriously, but I also take comments like that very seriously. So I just wanted to share with you how that landed with me, and also to the community, because there is not, like, there is not a single topic that I have not spent more time, as a council member, talking to my colleagues directly, each and every one of you, and the administration, and the city attorneys, and the department heads, and multiple wards. And so in a space where, like, I just wanted to name that, because when you said that, it really came off as you were trying to remind me of my job. I'm very aware of the election certificate that I hold, and it is actually because of the conversations that I've had, that I am sharing that my frustration has lied with the mere fact that in so many different ways, as the lead author of Tenant Protections, when I started the Tenant Protections journey, it was shared with me that these things had to move as a package in order to move forward. And I just wanted to share that with the community, because we have to be able to have ordinance languages separately, but I also wanted to just simply push back on that for every future comment that is made around how I should lead my role, and I'm sure that was not your intentions, but I did want to share with you how that landed and correct it for the public. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. Pervatsky.
Yeah, Council President Naker, Councilmember Johnson, and even to Councilmember Yang, that wasn't the intention of my statement. The statement is, was specific to the question of when amendments get raised, or are part of the conversation, and specific to the point of how many cases get suggested versus appealed. That was stated in our public meeting five days ago. We asked DSI and they publicly stated it. That was the nature of my immediate reaction of, these are questions we can ask, and they've been stated to the public within the last several days. And when amendments get formally proposed and shot to each other, those are the two details I'm speaking to. Those are our responsibilities as councilmembers, to your point, Councilmember Johnson, of if I wanted to amend this today, I would have taken it very seriously how and when I approach it, and that's why I wanted to give such direct credit to Councilmember Yang for her directly reaching out to me twice about the proposed amendment, even within this incredibly tight timeline. She took that very seriously, and I was naming that as a point of respect. But to the point of just how amendments are brought up and whether we're allowed to or not, is up to us and how we bring them and how we work them. And then even to the department question, a member of the public, as you remember, Councilmember Johnson, a member of the public asked, how many appeal requests do we get and how many have gone through? And we got those detailed answers within two seconds.
All right. Thank you so much for the conversation. I heard the author of the amendment ask us to take a vote, so we'll do that now with a roll call.
Councilmember Pervatsky?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Bowie?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jost?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
Council President Naker?
No.
There being three in favor and four opposed, those opposed being Pervatsky, Bowie, Jost, and Council President Naker, the amendment is not approved.
We'll go now to Ms., Vice President Kim for introduction of her amendment.
Yep. So we heard the testimony, I'm very appreciative of everyone that came out. Speaking of timeline and just crunchiness of process, like, we really pushed this through together to make it happen to come to the table. It's something that has been in the works for at least two and a half years. There were moments where I felt like this could see the light of day, moments that it can't, and I really appreciate my colleagues and their assistance in making sure that all amendments could be considered at this time, kind of recognizing that this feels like kind of the one shot, the one opportunity that we're going to have to bring this forward. This work has been years in the making, for sure. The previous council and this current council, I'm really proud to be bringing it forward today. I think just to offer a small preamble, and then I'll save my comments for the discussion, but prevailing wage just really guarantees workers will receive their fair wages and benefits and serve as a strong labor protection tool. We continue to add more tools to our toolbox every single year to think about how, the ways that we're protecting renters, protecting workers. And while I recognize that the timing of this and my plat instances and the appointment of new folks doesn't align all the time with scheduling, however, what I would love to urge my colleagues today is to vote based on its merits. Every amendment deserves an opportunity to be seen, and while I do hear that there is clunkiness in process, there are merits, there are strong, strong merits to this amendment, and I urge my councilmembers to consider. So I'd make a motion, and I'll save my comments for the discussion, so I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, prevailing wage, the A2 amendment.
Thanks, Vice President. And I'll just jump in here, because I missed my opportunity last time, and it felt like it wasn't the right moment. I just, I want to, first of all, again, thank everyone around this table for the hard work on all of the amendments, everything that we brought forward, and for the both passionate and honest conversation that we have around this table, that frankly is a departure from the way that I was used to the council operating before. We had this new council, and so I'm grateful. I think we're having really honest, open conversation that is sometimes hard, and I'm grateful to all of you for that. I will just say about both this amendment and the previous one, I am looking at this policy issue from the lens of the fact that we are in a housing crisis, and it is a matter of urgency, and I know that that is a view that is shared by many of the people who came here tonight. If there's one thing that unites everybody here, it's that we need more housing. If we don't have enough housing, we don't have choice, we don't have jobs in many cases, and we certainly don't have equity. And I believe that in this particular moment, which I do think is different from last year, the year before, the year before that, we need to send a strong, clear, and unequivocal signal that we are open for development. And like it or not, and I don't really like it, we need investment beyond the local investment. We need investment from folks who are outside of our community in order to build at the level that we need for our community. So to the point about, you know, lack of data, I don't think there's clear data on the 30 years. I don't even know if the point-in-time exemption is going to go far enough, to be honest, but I feel like we need to do, I need to do, in this role, everything I possibly can to help make that housing happen, even if it's not popular. And so that is why I'm coming to this table, prepared to support the original version of this amendment. So I will now stop talking and open up space for everybody else. Ms. Jost?
Thank you, Council President Naker, and thank you, Councilmember Kim, for your comments on this amendment. I think that, you know, my whole goal with this primary amendment and with my support of tenant protections is understanding, we have a lot of issues we're facing, and I want to make sure we're using the right policy tool for the right job. And with this amendment, I just think there's a misalignment here. We do already have prevailing wage in our code for city subsidized projects. It's a value that is already held by our city. And if that language requires updating, because I heard from a lot of folks that, you know, this is an issue with or without rent stabilization, for me, it's not even really a matter of the issue of prevailing wage. I'm more focused on what I'm trying to do with rent stabilization. And so I think if that's true, that's definitely worthy of its own conversation. Our council proudly passed a wage theft ordinance last year, which was sponsored by all of us, and we passed administrative citations earlier this year, which I proudly co-sponsored with Council Vice President Kim and former Council President Jalali, to enforce this ordinance, and many others, to protect the people in our city. So the purpose of my amendment, like I mentioned, is to bring the city into parity with other cities, and no other cities have a prevailing wage requirement on all new housing construction. But I really do care about prevailing wage, and I'm very open to more direct policy tools we can utilize to solve this issue that I think we all care about as a council, because we were to, for example, attach it to this ordinance, you know, if the ordinance were to go away, we would lose a protection that I'm hearing is really important to folks and that we care about. And so I'm committed to working on that issue in a more direct way than tying it to this, because I think tying it to the rent stabilization binds the two together in a way that is counterproductive to what Council President Naker said. I think adding any restrictions, no matter what they are, again, I think this isn't even about prevailing wage from my perspective, any restrictions we put onto building new housing within this ordinance will make that more challenging, and we are extremely challenged right now to build housing, and I just don't think we're in a position to add any further conditions to that. So I will be voting no on this.
Thanks, Ms. Jost. Other comments, Mr. Pervatsky and then Ms. Yang, and then Ms. Bowie?
Thank you, President Naker. I strongly support prevailing wage. I very strongly support our city doing our part to fight wage thefts. I have very serious concerns about how this amendment was brought forward, so unfortunately I will have to vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Yang.
Thanks, Council President. I am supportive of this amendment here. Thank you, Council Vice President, for bringing this forward, and I know you've been in communication with so many of our union leaders, especially Launa, who's in the room here today and who has been leading the charge on this, too. And this is, I mean, I was, I feel really similar to this, well, I'm just saying, this is not something new, all right? We've had this conversation for, I would say, almost three years now. Some of you who were on the campaign trail, you've even heard about this, made commitments on your end. It sounds like, for the most part, folks were committed to supporting this. I mean, I know at one point, the former council that I served with, there was, if I remember correctly, unanimous support for it. I think that, you know, for me, when I think about just overall, some of the comments I'm hearing at the table, like, it is, as a colleague of the councilmembers here, councilmembers who I know are, have been huge and strong labor champions, been supportive of prevailing wage, and even other initiatives related to wages, preventing wage theft, like, these are issues that you all have championed and led on. And so it is appalling to me to hear that there is opposition to it, because, I mean, even with the last testifier from Widener, what I clearly heard from them is, they're going to be abiding by prevailing wage in their project. You're clearly hearing from a pending project right now, where developers like, yeah, this is something that we are going to be doing. We, it doesn't sound like we have opposition to it. What I think is so important about this amendment here is that this is going to be one, so important for us to have, because if there were a developer who didn't want to comply with it, well, they wouldn't be getting exemptions for rent stabilization, and that is really important. Also, too, I've been at the table here so many times where I've heard from many of you all as colleagues, we want the bad actors out of our city. We want the folks who are going to come here, do good, be partners, and develop in our communities, and also, like, be collaborative. And I am very, I'm strongly in favor of that, too, and have been even raising that demand and also stance that I have. And so if this is a way for us to get those bad actors out, great, I'm all for it. And for the good ones, we'll line up, we would want to do work with you. And so it is, to me, so important that, you know, just to, like, to name that and ground folks in that, because what I'm seeing here is clearly a misalignment. I think one of you mentioned that this here amendment, this amendment is a misalignment. Actually, the misalignment here is the stance that I'm hearing from some of you who are in opposition to this. I will be voting in support of this amendment.
Thanks, Ms. Yang. Ms. Bowie?
Thank you, Council President. So I just want to share that, you know, I am a strong supporter of worker protections, which is why I advocated for wage theft. It actually not only was part of my platform, but I also championed at the state level for expanding the AG's office and the county attorney's office, particularly to prosecute people who do commit wage theft, and why I'm a strong proponent of strengthening our admin citations to have an equitable tool. So this is never a question around, like, my support and backing behind protecting workers and making sure that people do have fair wages, but what was mentioned today, like, I went in today, prepared today with the goals of how we can actually increase our housing supply and how we can remove barriers to making sure we're building affordable housing at an affordable rate. This policy, how it came about, I think, you know, kind of in a way, frames renters against homeowners and frames housing developers against construction workers, and I think it overly simplifies the challenges and doesn't really address the root cause of affordability. The relationships are really key, and I am so happy, particularly today, having a chance to talk with Council Vice President Kim and also some of our labor leaders briefly today around getting the rundown on this policy, having the opportunity to, you know, briefly look at the amendment, and also having a lot of questions that I, at this point, don't feel comfortable giving a full support on this amendment. I actually would need more time. I think that prevailing wage is a really citywide approach, not something that should be narrowed into this discussion around how we're updating our rent stabilization exemption. And, you know, I also appreciate not only the conversations I mentioned here, but there is conversations at the state level that I want to see, particularly around the state making a decision around arresting and charging companies that do commit wage theft, and like, how that will interplay. I represent Ward 1, a very diverse, socio-economically and racially diverse community, and there's constituency groups in my ward who are small developers and who are, you know, who I need to talk to beforehand to ensure that this doesn't hurt our emerging developers or developers of color who, you know, are committed to building more housing and are committed to building multifamily housings, but, you know, wanting to make sure that this policy doesn't hinder that. I, you know, heard earlier, Councilmember Yang, you had said, hey, if people are stealing wages, line up, but, you know, there is also an equitable way to look at that, particularly around when you are committed to building housing, and in housing that we do invest into our small developers, they come back to the table asking for waivers for prevailing wages. They come back to the table asking for us to make their development more affordable. And I am someone who represents a neighborhood that takes great pride in African-American communities and monk communities that build their homes, build their businesses, creating a legacy of building community wealth, and through this decision, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to hinder that. And I think this needs more time for me to talk with my communities around how we all can come together, where it's not one group versus the other, but it's all of us working together around making affordable housing more affordable to build. So I will not be supporting this amendment as of today, but I am so committed to still working with you around how we can bring forward stronger worker protections for St. Paul.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Bowie. Ms. Yang?
Thanks, Council President. Well, Councilmember Bowie, I'm not sure who you have in mind when you're talking about small developers, but this amendment here would apply to construction that is proposing units of 12 units or more. And so I wanted to point that out, because if you're thinking about developers who are building less than 12, this wouldn't be applying to them. And I, you know, I'm seeing where the votes are landing for this, and I'll just say generally, I am very disappointed. I really expect it better, because this is something that I don't even see as controversial. What I generally want to say is that I think that we are going the wrong direction when it comes to rent stabilization. I mean, there's so many other issues that I could be bringing up around why, around, like, what I have even been hearing about housing in our city here, and what makes housing, building housing very difficult. I've talked to you all at the HRA table, our Housing and Redevelopment Authority table, about how many complaints I get from developers about, why is the permitting process so difficult in our city? Why does it take so long for me to get an inspection for something that is so simple? The thing is that we have flaws in our system right now that need to be addressed, and we're scapegoating rent stabilization, we're scapegoating prevailing wage as a way to not advance and actually confronting the issues that we have in our system right now. We're not moving nearly quick enough to be able to address these issues. And seeing where the votes are landing, I hope that we will all make a commitment to really driving the conversations on that, be leaders in this space there, and actually discuss these things, find a resolve for it, because I tell you what, I don't think that after this, we will be seeing the results that you all are hoping to see, especially, you know, those of my colleagues, those of you who are, who have been opposing the amendments brought forward by Council Vice President and I.
Thank you, Ms. Yang. Any further discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I know I shared last time, too, this overall, I'll be voting in support of the prevailing wage amendment, but I wanted to take the time to also thank Launa and Building Trades and all of the union partners that talked to us about prevailing wage on this aspect, because while we have been talking about the rent stabilization, new construction exemption, and while we have been talking about rent stabilization, I do see this amendment as separate from previous amendment. I appreciate the comments, just a little bit about some of the smaller developers. It was actually a concern that I had had up until the language was changed to be limited to just 12 units, to like, folks that are, to projects that are 12 units or more. That is different than some of the language we are doing regarding the new construction exemption, which does not have a small landlord or small developer limitation. I think that one of the things that is continuing to come up is how we're inviting people to the conversation. So whether or not this passes today, I will just say, like, I really want to see the housing study that, you know, I was really vocal in the last budget cycle as Vice Chair of the Housing Redevelopment Authority to literally... to literally put the $100,000, $100,000 council prioritized housing policy evaluation in the budget. I did that because we all sat at the retreat last year and said that that was something that was really important to us to see. And it wasn't because we needed to, it wasn't because we needed to do that. It was because that was a desire last year for us unanimously to support a housing policy evaluation that would go into place to give us key findings on things that I really wanted to look at. One of those things was prevailing wage. And I just share with you that, like, it's unfortunate for me that this is the platform in which we're discussing prevailing wage, and I think that kind of goes to my previous, my previous conversations and previous comments. We did not have a chance to fully, I feel like, explore alternatives to what's in front of us when it was proposed. And I think that that has been the biggest messed up of this entire process, because it makes it appear as if this wasn't a multi-year conversation. If this hasn't, if there haven't been multiple conversations with council members, with, and the administration, with the city attorney's office, with, I'm sure, Launa and their team. And so, I just recenter us in the aspect that, like, this isn't a new idea. This didn't just come out of nowhere. There's, it was previously introduced by a previous council member who is no longer here. So, I just, it's, it kind of falls into that tenant protections category, where I'm talking about things that we made promises about in the past that we didn't really necessarily deliver on. I think prevailing wage, hopefully, eventually, we can get to a place where prevailing wage isn't, the context of talking about prevailing wage isn't that it's some sort of barrier to future construction. Because the reality is, like, the way that the cost of living is continuing to increase, at some point, prevailing wage is going to be what's acceptable in order to keep individuals and keep our St. Paul residents in their homes. And so, that's the conversation that I look forward to having in the future, whether it passes today or not. So, I just share that with my union partners that are in the room. I share that with our workers that are watching from home. And I hope that we continue to have that conversation, because to me, prevailing wage doesn't just go away with today's decision. And/or, but I'm, you know, I've continued to be a steadfast supporter of prevailing wage, and I was on record with doing that. I had several labor supporters because of it. And I'm a daughter of a union father, and so, I will be supporting prevailing wage on pretty much any projects that I look forward to seeing happen through the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Vice President Kim, and then I think if folks are okay, I'd like to move to a vote.
Yeah, I know so. So, I'll be just very brief. You know, this vote that's happening is a pro-worker, pro-labor vote. And prevailing wage amendment is a pro-worker vote. It's a pro-worker amendment, and the city of St. Paul should stand for workers and organized labor. The St. Paul Regional Labor Federation unanimously adopted a resolution of support for this amendment. The St. Paul Building Trades are here. SEIU sent a letter, hopefully, all of you saw it, and it was attached to the record. Prevailing wages are living wages for our construction workers, and the workers who build the housing in St. Paul should be able to afford the housing in St. Paul. Construction workers are among the most vulnerable to wage theft and labor violations. Our migrant workers are particularly vulnerable and are likelier to feel dissuaded from filing wage theft complaints. The current federal government's immigration policies will only make it more difficult for migrant workers to file labor theft or labor violations. Prevailing wage protects workers, provides livable wages, safer working conditions, and reduces income inequalities. And earlier this year, we passed the wage theft ordinance. But again, I stand on this opinion, but do you know what's even better than having a mechanism to punish wage theft? And I believe the response is the vote that we will take today, it's having prevailing wage. Prevailing wage is just another tool, again, in our toolbox that addresses wage theft, misclassification fraud, and exploitation in the construction industry. Wage theft is a problem that hurts workers, law-abiding employers, and is a social safety net for St. Paul taxpayers. Requiring prevailing wage will help good contractors, just like Ryan, just like Widener, who engage, who pay living wages to compete with bad contractors, who engage in wage theft, and misclassification fraud, and exploitation of undocumented immigrants and low-wage workers. I just want to leave with a thought, because I feel like all of our labor partners that are in the room really said it best. It comes from the North Star Prosperity Report, who I didn't realize would be here today. A final victim of wage theft is the honest business owners who are often unable to compete with the contractors that illegally slash labor costs through wage theft. The resulting race-to-the-bottom dynamic leaves businesses in an impossible situation. Either lose out on contracts or engage in their own worker exploitation to remain competitive. Only government intervention can prevent this dilemma. And I believe that we have a very clear role to play. I, with that all, I'd like to move approval, and I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Vice President, and thank you again for your leadership in bringing this forward. Roll call vote, please.
Prawatzky?
No.
Yang?
Aye.
Bowie?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jost?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
Council President Naker?
No.
Three in favor and four opposed, those being opposed being Prawatzky, Bowie, Jost, and Council President Naker, the A2 amendment is not approved.
All right, and that brings us to the end of the amendments that are being offered. It leaves us with the ordinance in its original form. I would look to Ms. Jost as the chief author for any brief comments, and we can take a vote.
Thank you, Council President Nakers, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone that's still here. I would just like to close by just a bigger statement about the rent stabilization ordinance, and really, what we actually started our day with from the Fair Housing Resolution. We know that we need to build 10,000 homes to meet the need in our city. We know that we're not doing that. We need housing that's affordable, we need housing that's high-quality, we need housing that is stable. St. Paul residents deserve that, and those are shared values that I heard during the public hearing from folks that were for or against rent stabilization. It's what I've been hearing for the last several years that we've been having this conversation. We have too many empty spaces in our city, at Highland Bridge, United Village, The Heights, Sears, now West Rock, Downtown, and everywhere in between, of all different sizes. And it's going to take a significant amount of work to restore these now vacant spaces, and that work is not currently happening, and this has to change. And I believe our city must act with urgency. And our housing crisis needs to be attacked from all angles. Tenants deserve protections. Housing must be built to meet that need. And the increasing costs of property taxes for our residents needs to be addressed. And we can tackle all of those problems, and today, we're going to do exactly that. In 2022, as I mentioned before, our council thought the 20-year exemption to our rent stabilization ordinance would be enough to allow developers to continue their work of building homes in our community. And there has been significant study on this issue, including comparisons to other cities, near and far. And while we may not have all of the information that we would like to parse the impacts of all the barriers to build, I believe we have enough data and the data that matters. And that's what we have been seeing, that's what we've seen has been happening in our city over time. The burdens of the COVID pandemic and increased construction costs, high interest rates, and empty Downtown, and Highland Bridge, which promised almost 4,000 units of housing, has been stalled for four years, have revealed that the 20-year exemption is not enough. We need to build homes, and we need to be ready to build when the market improves, when interest rates drop. We do not want to miss those opportunities when they come. And this amendment is a response to what we have heard is a barrier to building that will allow builders to continue their work. With this amendment, we are leveling the playing field in surrounding cities to entice development. Ward 3 constituents have made themselves abundantly clear to me where their priorities lie with the original election in 2021 and with many conversations that I've had with them over the years. People in Ward 3 disagree on a lot of different things, but they agree on a few things. They want to see Highland Bridge get built, and they want their property taxes to go down. They believe this is the change that will help make that possible. And my constituents, and I think other constituents across the city, really care about those core values of building more housing and more predictable property taxes for their future. Throughout this process, I've remained focused on the outcomes of this change for residents across our city. The 2004 date aligns with our current 20-year exemption. Buildings protected now will be protected tomorrow. A vast majority of the tenants in the city of St. Paul will retain rent stabilization decades into the future. Investors will no longer have a reason to balk at projects in our city. We will build Highland Bridge, we will build United Village, The Heights, and, as I mentioned, everything in between. We will restore Downtown as our economic engine, and we'll begin to close this 10,000-unit gap. We will create more jobs by putting hundreds of folks to work for years to come. We will stabilize our tax base, not by cutting services, but by expanding our tax base and welcoming more shoulders to carry the burden. Our housing crisis has gotten worse, not better. The decision before us is if we are going to accept the status quo or not. We cannot stay in our current course, and as a city, we cannot afford to do that. Our situation has reached a critical point, and it demands action. So, we must act now, and I'll be calling on my colleagues to vote yes on this today.
Thank you, Ms. Jost. Any other discussion before we take a vote? Ms. Yang, and then Vice President Kim.
Thanks, Council President. I will be voting no on this. I am still extremely heated from our Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting that we had today. And next week, there's going to be a proposal coming in front of us around changes to the agreements for Highland Bridge. To me, this is not just about Highland Bridge. It's about, not just even about development, but it's about policies that are, that make sense, that are informed by community, that also are informed by data, too. And just really, are, at the heart of it, equity is what is centered. And to me, that's really important, as somebody who is dedicated to fighting poverty, as somebody who grew up in poverty myself, too. I just want to name that, you know, when I think back to the HRA meeting today, I mean, I hope that it is an issue and that it is problematic, too, to the rest of you, that these agreements coming before us were already crafted in a way, in a scenario where we approved the amendment brought forward by you today, Councilmember Jost. That is very problematic to me. And I hope that the rest of my colleagues, that whenever we see ourselves in a situation like that, we ask questions, we also pause and, you know, press on the brakes and say, is this even something that we want to continue doing? Do we want to continue operating in this way, where we, as a council, we are leaders here at the table to lead in partnership with, you know, not only with departments, with the mayor's office, with our community members? Do we want to continue doing that? Where it pretty much, much seems like the council here is in a place where we don't have a voice. We are here rubber-stamping things that come in front of us. Because when I look at the amendments that are, when I look at the proposals that are going to be coming before us next Wednesday, I clearly do not see the council voice, the council representation in that. And so, I wanted to add that to my statements here, really, because I think that what is really difficult is, in a situation like that, where those agreements were crafted that way, it really puts councilmembers in a position where we are already very cornered, where we are having to, where we are almost forced, I would say, yes, forced, to operate from a place of scarcity, where even if our colleagues were bringing forward amendments, there's already this decision made prior to on, no, I'm not open to amendments, or I'm not supportive of it, because here's what is at stake. Well, what is problematic to me is that we have never even had that conversation, not in public, not even in private either, about the options that are on the table for us, nor, you know, really stepping into our roles as leaders in the city here. And again, I hope that we all do better.
Thanks, Ms. Yang. Vice President?
I'll leave it brief. And unusually so, I have written comments. Again, I just want to bring us back to the conversation that I wish we were having around what voters passed in terms of the rent stabilization ordinance. And their mandate for the city was very clear. Housing costs were unsustainable, and they remain so today. In a city where half of the residents are renters and largely working class, more and more families are becoming cost-burdened. There's no evidence or guarantee that permanently exempting new construction will lead to more development or even lead to more affordable housing, as was reported by the Alliance, whose mission is to create a more just world. And they gave us a lot of data. I'm saddened because renters are again being marginalized. We are witnessing Congress and the federal government's threat to millions of working-class families by defunding critical programs like Medicaid, Section 8 vouchers, and Social Security benefits. Housing is a human right in St. Paul, and it's time to stand with renters, working-class families, and ensure that families can actually live and afford to be here.
Thank you, Vice President. Any other comments, Mr. Prawatzky?
Thank you, President Naker. Thank you to Councilmember Jost and all the city staff who have helped shepherd this conversation. As everyone can see, any policy of this kind is complicated and stressful to work on. I appreciate all that's gone into it. I continue to be frustrated at how this topic is discussed, the lack of nuance we bring into discussions around rent stabilization in general. It's clear to me that this policy impacts development in our city. It's also clear that the rise and fall of development over time is impacted by many, many other factors, like global financial markets, interest rates, even other elements we ourselves control as a city, like the zoning code and the basic way we review building permits. I don't expect this vote today to magically unlock development on all our vacant lots overnight. I don't expect it to, on its own, spur the redevelopment of every site downtown or even in my ward, and I don't expect it to make up for the uncertainty brought by the national chaos we are currently experiencing. But at some point, when the conditions from all those factors are right, we will have the chance to add many more desperately needed homes in my ward and across St. Paul. And I do believe this change, they will play a small part in ensuring we're able to add those homes, those neighbors, and the neighborhood vibrancy they bring with them, if we continue to also improve our zoning code, our permit review processes, and the way we engage the community in those development conversations. This is a difficult issue. I don't believe any of the options discussed today are perfect. I'd prefer, we were talking about investing our public dollars in social housing, updating our zoning code to dramatically increase the ability to add homes and businesses to all of our wards, and spurring neighborhood vibrancy by giving folks easier ways to move throughout our neighborhoods. But if we're going to add the urgently needed homes in investment, and because we are also adding much-needed tenant protections today, I believe this change makes sense. And I desperately want our city to move beyond this year-after-year fight when there are so many other strategies we need to be proactively pursuing. I'll be voting yes.
Thanks, Mr. Prawatzky. And I just want to say, to that point and to those that others have made, we can do more than one thing. I think there have been a number of issues raised tonight with which I completely agree. The many issues within our own permitting processes, the need for the housing study of rent stabilization, the need to think about innovative models like social housing. I mean, all of those things are things that we are, have talked about and can do and are going to do. So, I just want to make sure that this one vote doesn't preclude all of those other things as well. I think Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Bowie, and then we will move to a vote.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to share, like, you know, from the jump of the conversation, I've had many conversations with each of my colleagues and with community members about it. And I just want to share a space of, of really just sharing with you all that I definitely understand kind of where folks are landing and some of the rationale as to why. I hear very strongly, you know, where folks are looking, and I've spent more time just kind of listening as folks were speaking, and there's a lot of things in it that I agree with. One of the unique places that I get to be in in this situation is really being able to be intentional about uplifting the voice of my ward at this time. And I have had many conversations surrounding tenant protections and rent stabilization over the last year and a half, but for sure, since the overall announcement of this exemption, I was very intentional, especially around the outreach and the community engagement. And I'm so thankful that we allowed time for that. I'm so thankful to the leadership of Councilmember Jost and Council President Naker on ensuring that we were intentional about having both the tenant protections conversation and the rent stabilization conversation, because as I said before, when I brought forward the aspect of revitalizing tenant protections, it was under the condition that they moved together. And I also recognize that this could have moved forward without tenant protections and the conversation had not been for the collaboration in that sense. And so, I want to be able to name that, make space for that, and share that in both cases, to me, this is where the will of the council will lie. At the same time, for me, I did not receive a lot of Ward 7 support from residents around the new construction exemption. I did not have individuals calling me and begging for the support for the permanent exemption from my ward. When I would go to my ward conversations and my ESEI conversations, what came up to me was a lot of emphasis on the non, what has been more universal and like, I guess unanimously approved was the tenant protections and the safer housing policies that were created before. And so, I know I've had the chance to at least share with you all how, over time, as I've had a chance to learn from and hear from more people, it remains unclear to me that I think the permanent exemption is a bit of a jump. And I think the slight misstep here is that we, I think we could have done better in involving renters in the conversation. And because we are not adding prevailing wage to this amendment, because we didn't even, you know, we weren't allowing room for that, and it's not the only reason, because I know that some of the same folks advocating for prevailing wage are also advocating for this exemption. But I go back to, it's really important for me in all policy discussions that we at least all entertain and fully consider alternatives. And I just didn't feel like we did that in this case. I think we kind of jumped to this as the solution. And so, I will be voting no today, but I also see and hear from the support. And it's mostly because, right now, my vote is not needed for this to pass today. I can actually vote in alignment, too, with people in my ward, and I don't have to support this today, so I'm not going to.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Bowie?
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, I know I really, truly, truly appreciate everything that was said. I know we don't all agree, and we all represent very diverse and unique residents of our, throughout the city. You know, I want to just share, too, as I'm approaching this vote, you know, I'm thinking really deeply about the lived experience. Not only myself, but representative of my ward as a renter, as someone who has experienced homelessness, as someone who is now a homeowner, as someone who is also a landlord to families who have been in and out of shelters, who have experienced when the criminal-
been in and out of shelters, who have experienced when the criminal justice system, and as someone who have learned and spent hours crunching numbers on spreadsheets to make development projects happen. We all put in a lot of work and a lot of time. Really, overall, like I mentioned time and time again, the goal is to make sure we can actually build affordable housing at an affordable rate. And I just want to echo that. That is the lens, that is the goal. In the last month, I have been in conversations with my community members, particularly thinking more broadly around our housing development and our economic crisis, our housing crisis. And I have been reading a book that some people may be familiar with, Ezra Klein's book called Abundance. And it talks about the barriers to building mass housing at scale. And also, some of those barriers stems from failed government policies that try to regulate their way into more development. And I lead with the question, you know, how do we create an abundance of affordable and accessible housing here in St. Paul? I really want us to, like, approach everything that we do in that, in that manner. How are our residents, you know, going to ensure that they receive abundance in housing options? And I strongly believe, like, we will never get to abundance if we make it difficult to increase that housing supply, whether that is policy, whether that's rhetoric, whether that is, you know, not including certain people into this conversation. And I already had mentioned, I don't want to talk about again, about since its passage, but I think, you know, we've had the opportunity to not only face the music, but also grieve in the process of, you know, the path of how we got here. But I really want to echo and remind folks that this is not the ultimate end goal. Like, we have so much more work to do, and I'm committed to that work. I also represent a ward that has one of, was one of the largest, you know, commercial corridors, now lays doormats, and has lost nearly a billion dollars of tax revenue that now is on the backs of property tax owners. And that gap is felt by people, whether or not they know it's coming from rent control, whether or not they know it's coming from housing development. So I really believe that this policy is not abandoning renters. It's creating a foundation for meaningful investments in, in housing, in stronger policies, in tenant protections. And we need a long-term strategy that incentivizes this conversation, reduces the cost, and ensures affordability for all St. Paul residents. So I appreciate all the hard work that went into it, but this is not a period. This is just a comma, because we're going to ensure that we are moving forward with, with conducting the study, with looking at prevailing wages, with that, making sure that we are banning the box and ensuring that there's not discrimination. But most importantly, looking, you know, one of the things that I've talked about in the retreats, I'm really passionate about public options, like, so we can drive the market in a way to where we're not treating housing as, only as a commodity, but housing is a public good. And particularly in my neighborhood, like, we have those examples. We have fully financed, subsidized properties that are owned by community, that are developed by community, and we have a model that we can build upon. So I, that's why I am continuing to, remains steadfast to ensuring that we are relieving the, the, the tax base from property owners, both welcoming investment and signaling to the entire country and to the world that St. Paul is a place for you to build. St. Paul is for a place for you to make sure that people have housing and have multiple options of housing.
Thank you, Ms. Bowie. Thanks to everyone for the robust conversation. I think we're ready to move to a vote. We'll do a roll call vote. And a vote, this is, I is for the amendment to rent stabilization, the 2004, and a vote against is, against that amendment.
Pervatsky?
Yes.
Yang?
No.
Bowie?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Jost?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Council President Naker?
Aye.
Four in favor, three opposed. Those being opposed, Councilmembers Yang, Johnson, Kim. The ordinance is adopted.
I want to thank everyone for coming out for the public hearing. I know some folks will be leaving the chambers. We have more business to attend to, so I would ask people to please exit quietly and quickly if you're leaving. We're not going to take a bio break, but I did let my colleagues know if they need to step out, they should. It's been three and a half hours that we've been sitting here. So if anyone notices any of us stepping out, that is why. And it is completely legitimate. We will now move on to the next item.
Item 37 is resolution, final order approving the, excuse me, item 37 is resolution, public hearing 25-49, final order approving the reconstruction of streets in the 2025 St. Paul Streets Program and sales tax street projects.
And this was a public hearing that was in front of us a couple of weeks ago. We laid it over until today so we could have our full quorum here. And we did keep the public hearing open to make sure that anybody who wasn't able to give testimony last time could do it today. And